Not on Monday night.
No.
Well, oh, and Marilyn wins next Tuesday, D.D. Or do you know?
Finish the break.
Marilyn, do you know when next?
I need her number.
It is Tuesday, okay.
I will have her number, I need her number.
Who?
Ninety-nine.
Janet.
Okay, well, I mean, I know Monday's a holiday, so I'm gonna go with that.
Forgot my number.
So hard.
Oh, what's that?
You're gonna be all, I'm shutting my freaking. How long? You know, that guy has time to sit and stand and try. You gotta finish.
Not gonna happen.
I think it's a good idea.
Well, you said you get good with it then.
Try that today is today's birthday.
I'll be careful.
The next Monday is President's Day tomorrow.
We count it every time he feels bad.
Fart. The stick takes orders.
All right, I'm gonna call for the all in special meeting for Monday. At seven thirty-two.
I may wait.
We'll call please.
All the way left.
Are you here?
Here.
Present.
Wilkins.
Present.
Harrow Rogers, Alum Baker.
I can't even stand to do the presentation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, folks. So that moves us to the three, which is budget workshop. Turn this over to you, kind of guide us through it, if you don't mind.
Okay, uh, first, I want to say thank you to all the departments who have worked tirelessly with me. We have been several hours individually putting these, putting this information together, figuring out expenditures, what's needed in each department, projects moving forward, what we need to look at. Not wanting to tip any hands down the road, but trying to decide what needs to be done this year, what could be done in the next two to five years, so. I'll tell you, for this next budget, I did some research, I looked at what the state's doing, looked at what other communities are doing, and then just reading the economic reports that are coming in. So, looked at doing a seven percent increase in our expenses and a two percent decrease in revenues. So far, looking at the revenues that have come in so far, and we still have two months that I need to enter in for the year, so let's keep that in mind, could change, may not. Revenues are very flat, we did not go, we didn't increase revenues so far. So I expect that it's going to be very close to being flat at the end of March, so I'll keep you posted on that.
What was seen is increase because of COVID-related stay home and local retail sales, alcohol, tobacco, grocery, people that, so I think, so that was part of eleven, that's gone, I mean, if people are out and about now too, so. Yep.
Okay, so, I'm gonna just jump right on into it. Does anybody have any questions or anything when we go over the four, like how done's the budget process so far, what we're looking at, if you think that seven percent and two percent is not, not.
So what are your thoughts on that seven percent?
I think seven percent is very conservative at this point, it could definitely be higher for what, when you look at what our revenues are, what our expenses are with the seven percent, gonna have decent clean enough in order to make it through the year with a positive balance. We're even break even, but we'll see, we will get there. Okay, so, your first page, everyone should have the same order, if not, I apologize. So the first page is general fund, so you'll see the taxes. So, the budget that we adopted for twenty-two, twenty-three, we were expecting revenues come in at two-seven, so far, we're only at one-nine, and like I said, we've only got two more months coming in, so, hoping that that number will get closer, but I do not think we'll hit two-seven.
So we've got ten full months worth of data in here?
Yes.
And so you're proposing this to be basically a half million dollars short of?
What we. Yes.
Seven percent start off, I think, even today.
Expenditures, I'm not a hundred percent sure that we are right on our expenditures yet, we have a couple of big ones that we still need to make, so look for that number to change, but I've got a lot of cleaning up to do in the funds. We've got money in some funds that are, should have been spent out of other funds and so on, we're doing a lot of journal entries to fix pretty much all the funds across the board. So, but, to give you, I didn't want to give you a whole bunch of information and go line by line like I made these guys do, because it would have been here till at least midnight. So, these are just the general number of the actual fund, and then we can break it out if you guys have questions later on, when we have another budget work section.
So we're gonna talk about public safety and public works in a little more detail then, since those are the biggest?
Yes, so, public safety's on your next page, and then public works is on the third page.
I'm not saying we have to talk to them yet.
Right, so, when you get into the city hall budget, when I spoke with Marilyn, we're in agreement that city hall needs a few, a few updates. One of my goals is to get, and it's gonna have to happen, you know, on schedule as we can, our phone system is obsolete at city hall, not a huge problem right now, but definitely one that we're gonna have to look for in the future. If we could swing it this year, we wanted to do it, but the, we've had to hire a new, a different company to take care of us for that, and his recommendation is that we do a phone switch out, don't believe we've gotten any kind of a.
He's been last week and he's working on a bid.
David can ask you an A.T. question.
Sure.
How about Teams phones?
Well, I mean, you need VoIP, I mean, that's, I mean, how old is the system, the phone system currently?
Yeah, I believe it was new when I started back in eighteen, new age.
So. We just, we just put that in a few years ago.
Yeah, that's what I, I didn't think it was that old.
Yeah.
So is there a trade-in for the existing equipment?
I don't know that. I can definitely.
Because we need to be able to resell it, so I'm, I'm just curious if they have.
Might try and get you to buy a new system.
It, what we have is pretty much obsolete already.
What I've seen recently, and I now have a desk phone that is actually part of Teams, Microsoft Teams. If we have the infrastructure for that, and you just, it might be an option, I don't know.
Well, I mean, yeah, the only thing, there are several solutions that are like that.
Maybe be cheaper.
Yeah, the only thing would be reliability, I would want to make sure on that for the phones, that we're gonna go with that kind of solution. So is he recommending a system to you?
I don't know that he has recommended a certain system yet.
He does not yet.
So we.
Right now, right now you're saying there's an expense that we were probably gonna have that is not in these numbers.
Not in these numbers.
So do we just have one person vying for this business, because if we do, that, that becomes troublesome for me, I mean.
We, the provider we were working with was in Mexico, but he passed away suddenly. So we have switched over, there's another provider in Colombia.
B.T.
No, B.T. doesn't work on a phone system.
Oh.
I do not remember the name of the guy in Colombia, but anyone else is much further out, and we're gonna have to pay travel time if we need assistance for it.
It'd be interesting to see, I've worked with B.T. several times, to see, because they sell phone systems as well.
They do?
They did the quote for, I don't know.
Okay, I'm gonna check with them too then.
We can definitely, and we'll definitely reach out and get other options, we're just looking for preliminary.
No, I understand.
What might we be looking at?
Some sort of idea.
Yep.
One of the larger charges in here that you'll see is, would like to order two computers for city hall, I would like one to be a business desktop, and the other can be like a residential desktop for the scanning computer, it's not hooked up to any like, it's not hooked up to our building equipment or anything like that. So we're looking at three thousand dollars for two new computers up here at city hall. One thing that we'll have to look at is dog and cat, dog and cat license fees, the tags themselves will increase, and we're getting really close to just breaking even with what we charge. If I asked Billis to check in, that's sort of statute, we're not charged so much for dog and cat license fees, so we need to see if we're near that, or if, because we don't want it to start costing us money to, the license on two cats.
They're two dollars, maybe two dollars for a.
It's almost ridiculous that they're two dollars, I mean.
I'd place that check for ten dollars, which is a lot.
It's not meant to be a money maker.
Two dollars, two dollars, yeah, it is.
Oh, well, that might be a big jump, I guess, before we get there to catch the kids replaced and everything else for three thousand dollars. I'm serious, I said she does, so I'm just saying, I mean, ten dollars if we really want a dog or a cat, she went to a thousand dollars on the dog from eating, so they, it had to be that.
Yeah, I mean, that, that definitely, we don't wanna lose money. We gotta make sure that we're on the first amendment charge, because I know I came in for those four for me, it was fifteen minutes of time sitting right there, you know, so that should really be part of the cost, the material.
So we will be looking at that, I'll have more information for you as it gets a little bit closer. Talking with Marilyn, just kinda want your input on this one, we would like to cancel our Indeed subscription. Our Indeed subscription, like, almost two thousand dollars a year leave, and we just get junk from it.
There's a lot of your computers.
Yeah. If you're all okay with that, we get most of our hires off of Facebook and local people will just spread more and more that we have a position open.
You gonna say something?
No, I know that Indeed with, with posting jobs and stuff through Indeed, like, we would get probably thirty, I know a few times we got like thirty applicants, but it's everywhere. It's like Washington, California, it's like, pretty sure I'm going here for this. Yeah.
So, the last thing, you're not gonna see a number on here, but I just wanna put it on your radar, would like to get budget software. So, the reason why I'm not rushing and putting a number in there is because that'd like to take a year to figure out exactly what we have, and vet out a couple of companies, see what it could be for us, also, there's been some interest from a couple of you to get all of our software into one company instead of having it pieced and parceled out, so just looking at what that cost would be to the city, what benefit that would be, or if we just wanna get a separate budget software or anything, don't you want what we have?
Especially if the budget software will help get us, get those repeated findings off of our, okay, they weren't findings, or they were recommendations.
Yeah, they're, they're pretty simple, bitch.
Yeah.
Those.
So, just on your radar, I'm gonna be working on that, and we'll be seeing that later on. So, that's mostly what's going on in city hall, other than that, not really a whole lot there, other than salaries and wages.
Is this where the chamber discussion should play then, if it fell into a budget on the city, would it be in this budget?
Chamber.
Meaning the position.
Talk about split, we're talking. Or where the, where the six thousand dollars would be in the general, in the fund anyway versus us doing something more, right?
I don't, I don't have that on here, I don't know where we currently pay that out of, it would be under general, I just don't know.
Yeah, I think you're right.
That makes sense.
You're weighing six versus.
Yeah. So right now, we think then six, they were saying they could pay fifteen or sixteen, so we're, we'll call it twenty, just for a simple discussion, total of what's current, salary of forty grand for a full-time employee.
That's not gonna happen, they're not gonna have that kind of money.
No, I'm not talking about the chamber having that kind of money, I'm talking, what would be the impact from a city perspective?
I don't believe that, I don't believe, from what I understand from all the years that the chamber was in our office, that she can be a city employee, he or she can be a city employee.
Other peo, other cities do employ economic development people.
But I don't think it can be a part of the chamber, it's, I, I'm not sharing it then, I'm sorry.
But I, I wanna talk dollars and cents for me, to see if it's even feasible.
So that's a takeaway for you, make sure, how would that look in the future, could they be employed and still represent the chamber?
I bet, I bet she can.
No, but I'll be honest with you.
I don't think so, but.
Because, you remember me asking her about the box, and she said that they, they were their own people? So I bet she can't be a city employee.
I don't think so, no. It's kind of like the Panther boosters in the school district, pretty much different.
Yeah.
Yeah. Exactly, Terry, yeah.
Yeah, I bet she can't be a part of the city.
I think that, that six thousand, I don't know that they've completely run through everything, I know that when Jimmy retired, they, there was a lot of discussion, and they had no idea all the things that she did, and that six thousand dollars doesn't pay her salary, it's just for helping with economic development.
Your own expenses for the chamber.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
There's not earmarked for anything else.
No.
No, exactly, and they think it's for salary.
It's not. It was just to help the chamber out in places they needed help at.
Kind of geared toward economic development from the chamber's.
And wherever they put it in their budget is where it comes. Yeah. So, I mean, one of their requests was if we made a person a city employee, and yes, we have to figure out if that's feasible, but a forty thousand dollar salary, twenty to thirty thousand dollars for the benefits that would be on top of that, we're talking an expense to the city of about seventy thousand, minus fifteen or so they would give, and the six thousand we give, we give them would fall under that budget, that's a fifty thousand dollar expense that we'd have to add into this.
Sure.
So, for them to be a city employee, a benefited city employee, they would have to dedicate thirty hours a week to, thirty-two hours a week to the city, it's only eight hours to the chamber, so that's something that they would have to consider, so, if we were doing that, I don't know how that percentage works out, but I feel that if the city were gonna take on thirty-two hours of forty-hour work week, then they should pay the other eight hours for that employee, if that makes sense.
As well as benefits.
That would be the percentage, well, it, it'd be the whole package, but they should pay that, if we're paying for seventy, if we're using seventy-five percent of that, then they should pay for.
I don't see where we have an extra fifty grand or so to add to the general government budget when, while we're looking at, here, that was the point I was trying to make, I mean, I, I love the ideas that they're bringing up.
Oh, yeah, I mean, they've got good ideas.
It, it's definitely needed, and would, the city would benefit from it.
Try to explore.
I don't know how we can afford taking on that extra expense.
And, and that's when I suggested to them that, I'll bring it up with you guys, to see if we could just extend out their contract, if you guys wanted to entertain increasing at this time or not, they don't have a director right now, if they do have a director, I don't know what their stipend is that they're paying, written aid for, the Ankerfest, but, but I do know that all the board members are, are hustling free heart and trying to keep this thing going at full speed.
I don't think we should be tied in with them, because I think it would cause problems.
Well, anytime.
Just one person's gonna say, like, they did more work here, and then they're supposed to be doing work over here.
Anytime you get into a time-sharing situation, it is, and you're at best, when you run into issues.
Why cause more problems?
And then, and then you get, you get feedback and influx from the citizens and the businesses, and people see it this way, because that's all they see of it, you know, and it becomes, can become very painful pretty quick.
I, that, my point I wanted to make sure we at least talked about was, could we afford the expense?
What was the cost gonna be, I, I think it's, at this point, I agree, I agree, I'm, you're trying to figure out where, where would this place support the cost, the daddy cost, right?
I mean, my thing is, why didn't they come up with these ideas way back when? Just now, they just come up with the ideas? I mean, I'm not paying for, giving them any more money myself.
I, I definitely don't think we should be adding a headcount to support it at this point, so I think we can.
I'm not sure, you know, at that point, if, 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 taking up, it's something we wanna really strive for, is to work with the chamber, but have, have a dedicated person that answers, you can't serve two masks, that's the other problem, yeah, right? So, you cut, you've got two, two places you gotta be spending and attributing your time to, and qualifying where you've been, and it's honorable and traceable, and I don't know, I just, I'm, I'm with you on that thought, so. To me, the only real question is this, I think, unless, you know, we get some real feedback from some, a couple of posts on here, we can't give them enough to talk of, but, is we stay with what we've got at this point, or do we give them anything extra? Marilyn says he's not for that, but I don't think we can take on and help encourage them to spend time on a business plan and things that we're not gonna be able to participate in, because when it gets down to it, we're gonna have to hold capital to the last quarter this year, luckily they were COVID hit, luckily, I mean, that towards our advantage, which was surprising, we thought the world was gonna shut down, but it didn't, right? But, this here's a different, this is the fallout of COVID, and what we see is going on with supply chain and everything else, so, you know, we're gonna be, we're gonna have to figure out a nine percent, because if you've got seven and two, as you're talking about, right, it's nine to me, total, if you're gonna cut your, your expectations down to, and you're gonna go up seven in budget, that's nine total, that, I don't think in any way, shape, or form, that's too robust in any way, shape, or form with what we're maybe gonna be up against. And so then, fifty thousand dollars is a good, you know, we just turned down not doing a project with free money for eighty thousand, and we could've cut off, you know, at, at a phase, because we don't have that budget, we don't have this budget. We got to take care of, we got to take care of what we got right now today, we don't need anything to it until we, we see the light at the end of the tunnel, we can do that.
Absolutely, we just have to be careful.
Yeah, so I mean, I think it's a great idea.
The reality, we need to dig in, dig in and not do what we have to do or what we should do, and we gotta still do what we need to do.
And then once we're, our needs are met, what we, we have to maintain, then at that point, we can see, if we get ready room in, in a year, we can, we can sign up for some stuff, we got, we just gotta, it's just gonna be a deal.
Marilyn, did you have anything else you wanted to say about your budget?
Nope, that's about it, pretty simple, not asking for much.
Do you have?
He jumped on the hook, he's a jerk, he's a jerk here.
Okay, so, one, yes, and the one.
Couple.
That's really non-negotiable.
One big thing that we actually do need to talk about is the ADA compliance doors for, from city hall. We're looking at some great opportunities, we can use, hopefully, our guys to help cut down the cost, but we do have, it's a brick face, but we, we've already had one complaint, we've talked to Murma about it, they said, and we're on notice. Even if it was a verbal complaint, said, I mean, she, we're on notice.
I thought they were on notice.
Yeah, and honestly, it, it needs to be accessible.
It, it's really difficult to watch some of our customers try to get in, and they jump up and try to get up there and help them.
Same need with my head, and I'm not in that state all the time, so I mean, I mean, I understand people that have a handicap.
Are the doors wide enough, and they're just the automatic, or are they not wide enough?
I believe they're, I think they're wide enough, I think they just need the mechanism to make them automatic.
Bo, have you a clarification on which way the door has to open?
We'll probably have to open towards the stairs.
It has to open out.
It's supposed to open out, and we just put in that little ramp. And we don't think it's wide enough.
The door from the inside swings towards the stairs, so it's set up the only way that somebody in a wheelchair can get up.
It's to the ramp.
Yeah, yeah, so when that, when that button, you know, you hit that button, that door is shutting off the access to the ramp, or the.
The stairs.
No, push them off the stairs.
Right.
Well, you're right.
We'll have to have that one and the one going in.
And they're probably gonna make you do this one too.
This one, we thought it would be by this, I asked Murma about it when he was here that day, and I didn't take a look at it, and that's when he said that they were not allowed to open in, and have to open out, wasn't sure that the existing stairway was wide enough.
That doesn't make sense to my head.
He suggested that we could just do without the inside door.
Is this the dude that goes to the park, yeah, we'll, we'll talk with him.
That was nuts.
We'll need Kennedy, but we're not gonna build a whole concrete structure.
He was also looking at the police department doors.
Guy gets lost, he loses jobs.
That's the one who told me that they just released them in like January.
Okay.
Bring some stuff.
I mean, 'cause if, if, if we can add that door to it and it's feasible, then yeah, I think go ahead and do it, so we're covered, but.
I, I think we need to do it as a service team, I don't have that many.
I mean, I'd be sure the chamber door, the bathroom, and the two doors to get in the, or the office, they would be.
Don't, I don't know if we'd be able to do it once, but as long as I keep showing that we're trying to get moved over, I think that'll go a long ways.
Sure.
I would think that would also be an art for that. That's just what I was gonna say, I'd say that would be something you could have right up that alley. I intend to collect a lot of them.
Yeah, but I think this is probably one of those that absolutely fit to bill, accessibility in the building.
But, you're probably right there.
Soon as you go into Columbia, you'll see it in about a year or two.
Yep.
Okay, moving on. All right, next budget is public safety program. I do have fire on here also, so, the police budget in itself is the top section, two-ten through two-fifteen, other public safety at the bottom is Sandy's function, so those two together. In the revenues and animal control, we do have money budgeted for the, the dog hound. I think we have more of it budgeted than we actually need, because we're not going to be keeping cats anymore, so we don't have to do the extra updates for the cats, so.
So I'll keep it fifty-one.
The Humane Society won't take them, so we have nowhere to go with them.
So, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
So in all this budgeting, it's based upon the five percent that will be going into effect for?
The, the salaries and wages are, yes, they're updated by, to the five percent.
To the five percent.
Increase, correct.
Okay.
So, these numbers.
Free range.
Free range.
So, the board had asked to see a sample of the police department's scheduling, to kinda help you guys understand, I'm gonna let Mr. Stovey.
So in this, so, in this public safety, in the police department's total here, I'm looking at one point four-six-five, maybe almost four-seven, is that the budget you're saying, not counting Sandy?
The top budget is the one point four, yeah.
Okay, and in that, same staffing amount that we have today?
Yes, so Harlan's gonna tell you that he is asking for, he could be asking for another officer position, and two off, or, two vehicles. The two thousand seventeen Corus and the two thousand eighteen Explorer have been in the shop a lot lately, so we're gonna look at getting two vehicles if we can get a state bid. The two thousand seventeen Taurus and the two thousand eighteen Explorer have been in the shop a lot lately, so we're going to look at getting, um, two vehicles if we can get a state vehicle.
How many vehicle deals do we have total? Because I get asked that at least five times a week, at a minimum.
Six including the chief.
Because they see them in everybody's driveway and want to know, you know, is that one of the first to be a police officer, and I, I contend with it, no problem, but I'm just saying I'd like to know, so there's six vehicles.
Six and that's including chief's.
Okay, so there's six total with his, not counting Sandy's.
And I will tell you that as a part of that, some of those vehicles are leased.
Right.
Two of those, I think, were, were purchased as wrecked, rebuilt police cars.
And that's the two you're wanting to, to sell, right?
If any of these ones were new.
Yeah.
The Taurus and Explorer were both.
Yeah, I know.
But, so, so, but that's not count Sandy's, but, but there's six with yours, chief, and then Sandy's, so it makes seven total. Would be what people should drive around, that's what I know.
And the Dodge has a brand new motor in it that we put in there this year, so.
What year is it?
What's that?
What year is it?
It's a twelve or fifteen, something like that. So I mean, there's nothing luxurious about these things at all. One of the cars has a pair of vise grips that operates the seat to go forward and backwards. So I mean, these are, they're, they're dogged out cars, is what they are. And the way I look at it is, you're spending anywhere from ten to twelve hours in that car a day, you know. It's an office, they do work in the computer, they work on computers in the car, they drive in cars, and so, uh, there has to be some element of comfortfulness in the thing. And so, and that's not even really mentioning some of the equipment, you know, that makes the job easier.
Well, they just need to be reliable.
Yeah.
I mean, because we had those two Urangos and they were, you know, at Butler for three months now, we've just got one back, so we've all had to share.
Because of the water pumps on, that's a problem specific to the Urangos.
Not all that, with their batteries, one was dead ended or something, and they had to update, and that's all covered under warranty. So that's great, but it doesn't change the fact that we have the other ones that, when we have those two in rotation, they get even more.
I'm more worried about those than the Dodges, because there was a purpose to lease and to go with that, right, and the other warranty, that kind of thing, we've got some steam in the suck up chances, yeah, yeah. So it, it tells me, so of your vehicles, of the, of the seven, yours and the, the two Dodges, once they're fixed, are probably the best of the fleet at this point?
Sure, I mean, I guess that's first.
I'm just trying to understand how to regulate this.
The three Urangos and the pickup, yeah, probably, the three Urangos that we have and then the four.
Oh, three, yeah, we got three trucks.
Are the best vehicles we have, and the other ones are constantly used twenty-four seven, and I mean, they're, especially the Taurus and that Explorer, they're in the shop all the time. And so, well, like I said, with us having two vehicles in the shop, and we're sharing those, those two pieces of crap, for instance.
So why do we have, so we got, we got three, then four, understanding chiefs, why, why, and I'm, I'm just asking questions because I'm asked when somebody asks you, right? So I want to be able to clearly, right, for our, our to half. Uh, so the three that are driven twenty-four hours a day, you're talking about the two or three, right? Why have we got two or three that are being run twenty-four hours a day and, and, and the other half of the fleet's gone? I mean, sharing some of that load?
Well, because we have, there's only two vehicles that we have, those take home cars right now. And that's, those are people that live in the city, and so, those are, that's your backup.
And those have been, those have been pulled back and put into rotation.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, I get it. Both those were down and we had other ones in shop, those were pulled back and said.
Thanks for clarification, that's what I, I wanted to know, I wanted to.
Do they have them because they're backup or something's going on? Yeah, they're, they're, there are in-town guys that, you know, everything hits a fan, you got to call somebody, that's who they're going to call.
And they, and they've come in too?
I get asked that question too, that's why it's, it's good that we're.
So we can explain why.
Because, you know, you see the one right on Jefferson, it's parked there, some people ask.
And he works, and he works nights, so.
Sure.
He's sitting there every day, so that's why the cars are.
Is that Anker?
Yeah, I knew that one, yeah, so I mean, good, just to know.
So are, so are those, are any cars in these numbers we're seeing right now?
No cars and, um, I did not add a position to that number, that is just current in there and the, um, increases in training. Um, we did add some money for them to update two of their computers. Some storage drawers for the cars, um, this is going to cost a little bit of money, cages for the, for the cars. Stop sticks and stuff, they're going to, um, work for, look for ARPA money for their, we did have ARPA money that we're going to get this current year, so that's not for that. Um, we're going to try and get a Murma grant for an AED for the police vehicles, I believe we can get so many a year, we're going to be working on that. So some of the money you see in there, um, not vehicles and not an officer, but for, for replacing some of the, um, like computers, NDTs.
Can I just, can I just add that this particular year, this year, we're fiscal year right now, we have the, we've spent some money that we would not have expensed for in the next couple of years. And that's the, meaning, we bought some, uh, we bought some more weapons, we bought some, uh, racks that secure the weapons in the cars, uh, and those types of things. We won't have that expense, and I, as, as far as I can tell, that came out of the budget as a six, it wasn't an additional expense at all. So we're going to have, um, some, some areas where we can clean that up, but, you know, when we talk about training numbers for, or money for training, you say, you know, look, we weren't able to go to any training, and the reason why you can't go to any training is because if we send somebody to training, then we have to hire, or not, we have to have somebody there to cover that spot, and that's going to be an overtime spot. Or it's going to be a part-time, and so, you know, the addition of another spot not only completes the coverage, and we talked, there's a two-hour gap between four and six. And I know somebody's going to have a question as to why, why would you, why do you think you need another person at that night? My illustration would be have Landon stand up and then have you go arrest him by yourself at four thirty in the morning. So, you know, if we have another person, we have two people, and that might not even be enough, is what I'm saying. So, if Landon doesn't want.
Let's do it at four o'clock in the morning.
Time clock's off right over there. So if Landon doesn't want to be arrested, it might take five people, that's the extreme. But you would want another person standing beside you, talking to somebody of that stature, and then you tell them you're going to be arrested, turn around, put your hands back.
So when does the people that are backup here in town come into effect? That would happen at that time?
Well, well, what I'm saying is, we wouldn't have to call them in to, to be a backup, because they were all, the, the person would already be there, the officer would already be there. As it stands right now, if you look at the schedule.
For two hours.
At four, yeah, four o'clock in the morning until six o'clock in the morning, there's only one person working. And there's no, and so, it, so to look at it like this, at four o'clock in the afternoon, we have a shift coming. They work four to four, and that gives an overlap for the day shift from four until six. So they've got two hours there where there's, you might see three people here, but it's for two hours, and then the next guy comes in, right, or the next two guys come in, and that other one leaves at four. So from two, from four to six, that's an open spot, uh, that, you know, if, if, if you were working that time, trying to arrest somebody, you would want somebody there.
Why wouldn't they all be a six to six? I'm just trying to understand.
Well, there's no overlap. There's no overlap there, and.
So if you get a late, leave it out on the road while the other.
So if you get a late call at five thirty, then they could be here for another two hours processing an arrest, and then be back ten hours later.
I, I was, I was just asking for.
No, 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 I'm, I'm trying to give you a good illustration.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
And that presents a whole different set of problems in itself, and we're already dealing with just nine people.
It's a lot of numbers, that's another reason why the schedule looks that way, is because, I mean, you're, you're trying to put nine people in that have to work seven days a week in order to get their, their time in, and you have to allow for a certain amount of time off, and then you have, I mean, we're twenty-four seven, you know. So we're, we don't get weekends, we don't get holidays, I mean, every day is work, all day long. And so if you've got somebody that wants to take a day off, it's nice to have an officer that can cover that shift, and part timers are not reliable, because they already have a full-time job.
The other thing is, is if, in, in a, if, if we did add a spot, then if somebody was missing on the shift, this gives, Stovey or Harris could step up, also what this does is, half of the time right now, the officers may not see their supervisor that signs their paperwork. If we add the person, supervisors change their schedule to some degree, and now they're working half with some and, you know, some with the other.
So supervisors, let me ask you this question. How much time is administrative time and how much time is actual patrol time for your supervisors?
I'll try to draft that.
Fifty percent of the time you're doing administrative stuff?
Yeah.
Well, he, but he, but he's also doing some evidence, he's also doing the schedule, right, so.
Yeah, scans is administrative to me, I think that's understandable, I'm not going to just come to that mix it, right? Because I think that's part of what you got to look at, when you start about, where are these officers going to, why have we got ten of them, including you, in that number, chief, right? Because that's what we got told to get to, so I'm just going about what we were told to get to, so what I'm doing is kind of refreshing, refreshing what we were told and where we're at for that. I think that helps us all have a better idea of why we're where we're at today, now suddenly we're needing, we're thinking we're here, but we need another officer, we told, we just need to get staffed up to ten, put in the chief, get that number. So here we are, so that's why I want to know what the administrative amount of time is, would you say that's a fair number for your, your leaders?
Yeah, so, I would say this, I believe that I should be the, the end of it. So let's say, let's say a complaint comes in, I think the complaint should go to that person's boss, right, it starts there. They make a recommendation, I shouldn't do the investigation on that, he should do it, make a recommendation to me, I can up, up the punishment, or I can reduce it, or say, hey, it's good.
But after reviewing it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, because that, that was an issue I believe we've had in the past, okay, so I'm glad it gets that level.
So what I'm saying is, there has to be a level in there.
I agree, I, I, I agree with that, if you've got people hired to do a job to a point, there needs to be a second check, just a third step, depending upon the severity of what you're dealing with.
Correct, correct.
What's going on, that all makes absolute sense to me, I just want to know how much administrative time is being spent in an office? And the citizen's saying, whatever, drinking coffee half the time, or whatever, so we can know what they're doing, and we can have an opportunity to defend what's happening or not, right?
Well, I will say this for an open book.
Oh, I don't, I, I get that.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I absolutely get that, but I'm asking these questions because if we don't ask them to talk about it right now, then we go, we sit and we talk about things, and we, we don't have a damn clue what the answer is to that, unless we just directly ask, right? And so that's what we're doing, and I, I know, I'm going to get honest feedback.
So is there any questions about the schedule, I mean, as, as you look at it and see it? If you have questions, you can email me or call me on the phone, I'd be glad to talk to you.
Can I ask a question? Where does the mutual aid fit into your schedule? I mean, I'm just asking.
What's, what do you, what do you mean by mutual aid calling?
Boone County.
Okay, so at nighttime for Boone County, they might have three or four people working, maybe four, if you're.
But we've got, what, four, okay, go ahead.
Audrey has two, and one's dedicated to, uh, Vandale guy, or, yeah, I think Vandale, okay, so they ain't coming to help. Boone County, you could probably get the help, but it's going to be imminent, so surgeon ain't coming to help.
No, they don't have that.
The highway patrol, if they get out of bed, they'll come help, so that's, so it's us.
Okay, well, I was just asking, because I know there's what, four or five Boone County cops that live here and that.
Yeah, but, but they have jobs too, right? That doesn't mean they're going to come here and help, they live here.
Okay, I, I'm just asking.
They're on, they're on a schedule like this, I mean.
Right, yes, I realize, they're actually on a ten-hour schedule.
Yeah, but the point being, I mean, they're, you know, they got to have so much time off too, right?
Right, right, I understand that.
I understand what you're asking.
Mutual aid normally comes into agreement when there's a big incident.
Okay, that's not, and that's, that, that explains it, Harlan, I'm sorry, I'm just. I mean, in my subdivision, I think there's six or eight cops that live in there, you know.
That's a great problem to have.
It is, it really is.
I mean, I, why do we have, like tonight, we have five officers today on duty? I mean, is that a busy time to have five officers? I mean, I, I'm just asking.
So, okay, so there's two, there's two for the day work, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, who's the other one that you're talking about? So there's two for, for day work.
So you got the six A, six P, six A, six P.
Yep.
Six P, six A, six P, six A, four P, four A.
Well, you're, that's including Harris, who's half as time as admin, making sure things are being done and.
Correct.
But then Tuesday, you've got a six A.
There's only four people.
There's only four people on Tuesday. You got five on Mondays, four on Tuesday. So you got five here, and you got four here, and you got four here, and then you go back to five, and then you got five.
What's it look like next week?
Okay, so, this is, this guy's in training, long six eighty-one, he's in training, I should have clarified that.
Yeah.
So he's, he's a training officer.
He's going to turn loose, yeah, he's not, he's not long, learning and understanding.
He is, he is in, in field training.
And so the, the other side to your question, though, would that to be, would be, you may see five people working, but it might be a part-timer that come in. Now, Tara and I have talked about this, and I've talked with Stovey about this, and I said, you know, this past year, the part timers have helped us get through some of our shortages, there's no doubt about that. But what I would also say is, we need to do a better job of telling them when we need them, not to say, I'm available on this day, you want me to come in, say, no, we don't need you. But if you, but if you're available on Wednesday, we'll take you.
We, and I, you, you segue into something I wanted to make sure we talked about during budgeting, and that we've talked about, this is for all departments. That's for here in City Hall, overtime is something that we cannot allow part-time people to get more than twenty-eight hours of.
No, part timers cannot get any overtime.
Okay, but, but, excuse me, I'm sorry, I messed it wrong, we can't have part timers going above the limit, because it's going to put us into a bad situation when it comes to having to give them full-time benefits and being a problem. So when we work part timers and they start to get over that twenty-eight, it puts us in a huge risk, we can't have it.
So I will say this, for my department in particular, when I found out that was happening, I, I had a specific conversation about that. But I will say this, COVID has still continued to cause problems over there, um, with people being out sick, and sometimes it's, what do you do?
No, 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 I think so, we, we get that, we just got to take, because now we start to get in a pool of money that gets expansively, more expensively versus salaries, right? Uh, the park department has got to be absolutely, they employ far more part-time people than anybody, you can't have those people getting thirty-eight hours, forty hours a week, you know? So we just got to be really careful, is what I'm saying, so the mandate from, from us, because of budgeting, it has been since we started this, when I, when I got in, the first year we did this, was overtime needs to be managed down, and it got managed down on the inside, because we had, I don't know, five, I think it was six hundred and some hours of overtime on the inside. And you don't want to jump in that, it's crazy. So anyway, my point is, we've got to really be conscientious of that, so as we look at this, we need to understand how much overtime are, are other officers getting that we're paying? Does that pay for a person? I don't know, I mean, that's something I think you got to look at too, right?
I, I, I'll tell you, overtime has eaten away at every department's budget, and I'm looking at it.
Just, just stand noticed that that's got to be managed, period, because I'm going to be, and you and I will be talking about it, so.
Some of it's unavoidable, we have utility callouts, you have aggressive damage, that's unavoidable.
You all know me, I absolutely understand what it takes, and we got to take care of the citizens and trade, what needs getting done, right? But I, 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 I respect you all, I trust you all to do what needs to be done with your teams, to make sure you're helping the city be compliant upon our costs and our budget. Because we're, I, I know I may sound a little frazzled over this budget thing, but I'm frazzled over this thing, because it's nine percent, seven and two does not make me feel warm and fuzzy because of what it's going to cost, I think, potentially freshies in here coming up, right?
There's an acceptable percentage of overtime, we were, we've been well below it for a long period of time. I, I honestly, I have stopped looking because we were well under it for so long, so I don't know, but I mean, there's a, there's a, there's a, a number that's reasonable, and that's excluding ice and all that type of stuff that has to happen, you know, windstorms, I mean, those are all special, you know. Windstorms. I mean, those are all special, you know?
They're talking nicer than snow one day this weekend. Yeah, tomorrow.
So do we have any budgetary numbers? Trying to get a little bit back on track on what we're talking about. At least, do we have budgetary numbers for cars at this point? I know the last ones, I think they were like thirty-six thousand dollars, I think, for leases over several years.
Were you able to get a number on the Tahoe's?
Well, so.
Tahoe, here we go. That's bigger. That's a lot. Here we go.
So I left a message in an email with a friend of mine that does it for Columbia. He was able to tell me that, that I need to go through a state bid, which will give me the dealers that will accept them. He said, you better have your numbers together. Like, if it opens in June, you better be ready to go in June because cars are being soaked up. And, and, and really, they may not even have any. So, um, when she was asking me, I mean, I was ballparking it. Thirty-five to forty-five thousand dollars probably. I had to guess.
Oh, I bet it's more.
What?
That we're gonna budget eight grand.
I'll get three hundred run around myself for that.
I bet it's.
Well, you can, you can. I hope you can.
Right, so.
We're also hoping that is the, the lease payment that we're making this year too. And I need to look at the contract to figure out if this is the last payment or, I think next year's the last payment.
Well, and, and understand, there's a big difference in the lease you end up in because at the end of the lease on these Durangos.
Cars are ours.
Their cars are ours. We pay a dollar for them.
Yeah, it's either a dollar or a hundred dollars.
It's a dollar.
It was a dollar.
I, I double, I triple checked it because it sounded too good to be true. So my point is, we have a vehicle at that point that's been serviced on a regular basis. That, as you know, as used vehicles are bringing, we can get a good chunk of money back. So that's another thing. We've gotta look at the overall. Agreement at the end of it, what's it cost us as we get out of it to have and be able to get our money back, right? I mean, so let's make sure we're looking at this. You're talking to folks if you could.
Yep, absolutely. Is there any more questions on the schedule? Because I'm letting it get out of here.
No.
Thank you.
Get you off that overtime. Get, get moving.
He's disvolunteering his time tonight.
Sorry, thanks for what you did. I appreciate you. Thanks, Rob.
Are, are the requests not in here? The headcount request is not in here?
Correct.
Been waiting to get some figures of what that would cost us.
Well, we could flat rate budget eighty grand and if it goes over, we would just be looking at one.
I mean, can you go at the Butler and get a quote on a Tahoe?
If, I, I don't think there's on the state bid. I mean, I think there's a stark difference between.
Well, there's a, there's a big difference on the state bid.
Versus a.
It's a large.
Now, they go, yeah, we'll give you this, but I, you know, he's probably got chrome rims on it and all this other stuff that it doesn't need. So I think the answer to that is no.
So Harlan, let me ask you this. If we budgeted for one vehicle, would that be?
I'd, I'd accept that. Because I think the cost, even though it's costing us money, aside from the general upkeep of the cars. I think we could get through the year with it. Uh, but, you know, we had several things happen this year that, you know, obviously applying for, so. Some of it was covered by insurance and some of it wasn't. So, the answer is yes, probably.
Do you believe that either one of those vehicles will not make it through the next year?
Is Harris driving it or not? I, I, I can't, given how they performed this year, I can say probably not, but I think if we just, you know. I told them, stop letting the cars run because they're not designed to do that. So I've been hard on them on that. And so, I mean, we'll just have to double down on that.
That's what we realized. I leave it on the high, but the budget hours is very high.
Yeah, well, I mean, that, 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 that particular problem is not unique to Central.
No, no, no. I'm sure, standing around and, 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 and no one, I mean, being driven around in the way they're horrible vehicles.
And, and you know, the only, the only argument that I have for the officers on that, it, it, it is their office. So I mean. You know, hollow, but it doesn't, I, I tell them, it doesn't take that long to get the car up to where you need it to be to be comfortable. So, you know, the argument really is moot at that point. So, I mean, that's an argument I've had for the twen- last twenty-one years.
I mean, that's true. I mean, I've lived in multiple climates.
Yep.
And it's the same way. I mean, and officers deserve to be comfortable in that aspect.
And, but you gotta put it from a reasonable, isn't this?
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's.
If you're outside, I mean, maybe you shouldn't be running the cops.
All right, is there any other, uh?
I'm just curious, the, we're coming in, what, three hundred K, three hundred and fifty K below this year at this point? Um, for the police or what, one four seven six was adopted and one one fifty seven?
So, like I said, there's some stuff in there that needs to be moved around, um. And some expenses that we haven't spent yet that will be by the end of the year. Um, but we're going to come in slightly under budget for the police, yes.
Okay, so the question that comes to me here as I look at this proposed. If we're running the budget. Communications. Three hundred and fifty thousand, three oh three is what you're estimating, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three for us to finish that. And then we jump. Seventy-seven thousand dollars for the next year. I need help understanding that. If I'm reading this correctly.
So. Two part-time employees were not included in the budget. Last year. So when I added them to the budget this year, it popped up a little bit, um.
Overtime a problem with that group?
Only one of the part timer, uh, overtime in general in dispatch is, yes, a big problem this year. Um, Harlan was able to get it under control. So the last few months haven't been bad.
Just trying to understand numbers and where we're at, so.
Right. I can double check my numbers, but, uh, it's what I had.
It's a lot of money.
It is. So we have four full-time dispatchers. We. So in addition to. Only one, one part timer was budgeted for the last, um, budget. This fiscal year, we added two more. We had one, we, they were short a full-time dispatcher for a good part of the year. Stacy Snyder, um.
Came back.
Came back and she was working full-time. So we're back up to four full-time dispatchers.
Yeah, and COVID, uh, back in May and June, I think caused some issues. Funeral leave causes issues. Taking a day off causes issues.
And that's what happens when you have all necessary.
Right, right. And so a, a part of that is, is I'm trying to get some of the duties that are on, like on Stoby. Into one of those part-time positions for Nicole to, to do the evidence. So that Stoby's not in there on the computer, he can be out on the road. And, and we're still just working towards that. And one of my part timers, other part timers that's civilian is doing, still doing the evidence, which is a nightmare. Trying to get orders from the court to dispose of stuff that we've had for twelve years is ridiculous, but I can't control that. So that's the boat we're rowing.
Uh, another thing that's, um, making the number higher is I did budget for those part timers because without knowing how, um. For the schedule, I have one part timer who's working a little over thirteen hundred hours, but then. Two of the other part timers aren't hardly working at all, um, but one of them is fairly new, so I don't know, she'll be working more hours. So I budgeted all three of them each at thirteen hundred hours. That can obviously be changed then after that. And then it's the same for the police department with their wages being as high as they are. Um, we have some part timers that work more, some that work less and, um. Without knowing how many hours you wanna budget for the part timers, I should have asked you. Um, we have four part-time officers now. And they're each budgeted at thirteen hundred hours also.
But I don't think that that's gonna be, I don't think they'll reach that. Matter of fact, I mean, I, we can navigate that.
That's sixty percent essentially, a full-time employee at thirteen hundred hours. Although that's sixty-two and a half percent. Or someone who works forty, forty hour work, we can, I know these officers are off a little bit from that, but, so it's, it's sixty-two and a half percent.
Plus, that doesn't even take into account that the school resource officer won't be in there.
So going into this, we are full staff with ten with four part times, part timers, and that's, um.
That's very different.
That's what's putting their wages and benefits up so high.
Figuring that thirteen hundred hours per year, that's up.
Yeah.
Plus a hundred and four thousand dollars.
And they don't even start getting overtime until they work maybe six hours, which is.
So four, you have four police, part-time police officers in there at thirteen hundred hours?
I do.
Two essentially would offset a full-time employee. So if.
Not quite. So. Well, the whole time of police starting is gonna be right around forty thousand and then their wages and benefits are anywhere from. Twenty-three thousand to thirty-one thousand, depending on what kind of health insurance coverage.
So they'd be about sixty, sixty-five thousand. Hundred and four thousand to the four.
If you wanted to do.
At twenty dollars an hour.
Another full-time officer, we would have to go down to one hundred minimal part-time officer. But it's, okay, so right now with the way that it's budgeted, the police, um. Of the one point four million dollar police budget that you see, um, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that is wages needed.
Now that, yeah, so that.
So yes, we could definitely knock down the part-time hours and that's going to bring that down. But if you're gonna add a full-time officer, then that's not gonna take that down.
You, you, yeah, you want him to add to thirty thousand dollars. If you go to two part timers and a full-time ran in here.
Well, I would suggest knocking it to one part timer if you're gonna.
Well, I was, I was saying, I mean, the most.
Or thirteen hundred hours of part-time regardless of how it's bred out.
Oh, you mean thirteen hundred hours total for part-time?
So how much is, because I'm not this quick in my head, but thirteen hundred hours times twenty-nine, or, or, let's just say nineteen bucks an hour?
Or twenty.
If you take thirteen.
Well, if you take, if you take thirteen hundred hours for four part timers, okay, she's figuring a hundred and four thousand at twenty dollars an hour.
Well, what I was trying to get at was, if I just had thirteen hundred hours of overtime.
That'd be, it would be.
Part-time. What, what is that number? Because I only, I only, I only did, up to this point, the best estimation that I did is.
Twenty-six thousand dollars.
I've only done sixteen thousand five hundred dollars in part-time money this year.
It'd be twenty-six thousand dollars for one person.
So, I mean, we're almost through the fiscal year on that, so, you know, if I had thirteen hundred hours. For one person, I could maybe up that between the four that's there, if that makes sense. Because I'm only at sixteen-five for this year.
I, I, I think we should be thinking, how many hours or dollars associated towards part-time versus the headcount? You could have.
That's, that's what I'm saying. That's the point.
The headcount doesn't affect it because they're part-time.
Correct.
It's the hours that kills us.
That's correct.
If they're not managed, it kills us.
We're two months out of the, end of the fiscal year and I, I'm only, I'm, I have, in the proposed budget, I would still have ten grand to video. And we're gonna, it would be reduced because of the additional spot. We'd be able to fill spots that are not being filled now.
So.
So from a budget perspective, if you added a police officer and took your four part-time, just to keep it simple, put them at three hundred hours or three and a quarter hours each. It would be close to a wash. The question, from the proposed budget, the question would be, can the chief sign up to that and support everything he needs to? If we added one to that, and it's still, I mean, it's. I mean, the overall budget, the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three adopted versus the new proposed is essentially flat. That would be a way to add a full-time.
And, and not ad ludge.
And he would have to mid, make sure he manages his hours on his part-time. And if that means there are days where we have a small gap. Throughout the year, that's fine, but not scheduled.
On a regular basis.
For two days a week.
And that's what I was trying to make a point earlier. We've kind of been quasi-driven by the availability of the cop. Plug them in, but I'm gonna get away from that model because I don't, you know, it's not, it's not, um, best use of the money, let's say that.
So, so wages wise, for the police department. With communications included, which is this three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two sixty one. How much is the wages then, just wages for the, the officers as it stands? For a quote for this year, not adding the, I just want to know what that number is for. It's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or?
Oh, for this year? No, I wouldn't say that. Um. I don't know the answer to that. I'll have to get back to you on that.
Because I, I wanna know, is it four hundred and fifty thousand dollars we're paying in there and we're paying three twenty-seven for communications?
No, no, I'm sure we're paying quite a bit more.
That's what I'm saying. I just want to know, is it fifty percent of the budget, is it thirty percent of the budget for joint communications? Because this is, we're, we're gonna come to a crossroads here at some point.
I got you. No, I can, I can get you that information.
If, if we're gonna have what we want, the way we need it for the people to keep and retain and have, we've got to have open discussions about what our options are in the future. So.
Tara, does that, that doesn't fix anything by going to one police officer, adding one police officer and cutting the part time. Other, it fixes the chief's, it meets the chief's request.
It meets the chief's needs, yes. And I wasn't gonna say this until after we talked about streets, because I don't want Harlan to think I'm picking on her. We're gonna, we're gonna have a problem in the general fund this year, this upcoming fiscal year. There's just not enough money. We're going to be in a deficit. And that feels like I'm staying, you know, I don't get a budget at all. Um. We're looking at a two hundred thousand dollar deficit if, and that's without. So making the position a wash without adding a vehicle. We would be at negative two hundred thousand dollars if we keep fills and City Hall's at the same. So just, we've gotta. We're gonna have to turn, I, I'm not comfortable being at zero at the end of next fiscal year.
Right.
So we've, we've just, we've, we've gotta figure out a way to trim probably, I, I would think at least a half a million dollars off of.
Absolutely.
Out of the budget, out of, out of general revenue.
Either cut expenses or increase revenues. Those are our two options.
Correct. So it's just. There's only so much that we can take from utility funds because of the government by state statutes. So general revenue fund is just always.
Is the state statute based on a percentage or is it, is it a set dollar?
I'm going, no. So we just have to be able to explain what we, what we use. So. If we say we want to take. Let's just say we take, instead of three hundred thousand dollars from electric, we're gonna take a half a million dollars from them this year. Two hundred, we're, we'll do three hundred thousand dollars from water and another three hundred thousand dollars from sewer. You get double then.
Whoa!
And, um, we put all that in the general revenue fund. If we're not able to match on our side that we're using that much with, like, our City Hall employees that. We give the service calls, utility customers, the building and all of that, then we have a hard time with an audit saying what that money went to. And whether or not it was actually spent on utility expenses.
But it could be a percentage of the utilities budget. Just a port, but it's gotta be a reasonable adjustment.
Yeah, it has to be general.
That's the time for that.
And we, we're probably.
It's been a year since we talked about it, so just trying to be.
We're, we're gonna look at doing probably something different in the, in the field anyway with water and electric and things like that, because in some of the. because in some of the training that I, um, was involved in and didn't realize, but right now, say, Aaron, um, has a water leak and he digs up the road, well, that concrete job comes out of Phil's budget, because we just never knew that you could transfer that money from the water. So, I mean, that's one way to, you know, sorry, but.
Phil, do you feel like, Phil, do you feel like a pin cushion?
Yeah.
I love it in my backyard.
I, I had brought that up years ago, and it was.
It is, it is legal to do that, if the, the utility is going through the road.
I, I would expect it would be.
That budget can be used to put that road back.
And it would not be a big hit, you know, they don't, don't dig into the roads that much, I mean, it's not.
Yeah. It puts an expense with the associated.
You can understand their.
Which would make sense.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just talking about the material. No, no, I understand. Also, what about their hours, if they've been allocated to do, what would be?
Every bit of it.
Can go, right, I'm saying, so I mean, it's more than just the material?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would count against it, that's what I'm saying.
Well, the, the salaries are already figured in, getting paid, so, I mean.
No, but you're being deployed to do a different job other than what you're typically paid for, so when you get audited, we could say, you, you were redeployed and recommissioned to work in a different department, to help them out in time of need, even if you're passing streets for them, if there's, if they take a hold of. So that's what she's saying, take an audit, just like the staff here, works on billing or whatever, that would, that would work the same way for you guys. Transferring, trading, trading services, should.
That's how we used to do it, years ago.
But I mean, that way you do.
Simplify the salaries.
Of, if you, if you had blue budget money.
But, and that's, I mean, that's very, a very small thing, but those, those things do add up over the course of a year on the budget of, you know, if you track a water line and, and you can't find it in the first eight bay, oh, you got it, can, it can add up, but North Street was one of those, yeah.
I think he's talking about screening it, so.
Absolutely, no doubt, I don't know if you guys saw what happened on Under the Towers the last couple of years, but, uh.
So right now, we're minus two hundred in the car.
Yes, right now, yes, so, I feel like we squirreled a little bit, so, get back in, so it's not, my goal tonight was to present you guys with what is being stated that is needed in each department, and then deciding what we can do. Deciding, prioritizing, and, and getting through it, so, um, as Harland stated, a full-time person is gonna help with, we can cut down on the number of part-time employees that we have, and it's gonna help getting our force trained and up to date on the training. Um, and then if we can get at least one new car, it's gonna help them hopefully with not being down and sharing.
Or leases, I mean leases, although it might be harder than, at least to get a lease in today's market. I mean, that, that helped us get multiple cars several times over the last, and.
And it was, it was really not, it was pretty marvellous, the expense for pro-aid on the deal was pretty, pretty marvellous difference, I mean, for what you end up with at the end.
Was that state, that wasn't state, was it?
No, that came to the dealer.
Yeah, that came from the dealer.
Yep.
Anything else, Harland? All right. So next, we'll move on to Phil.
I've got nobody left already, so.
I gotta run.
So I guess that means we're not gonna take over our garbage pickup and all that kinda stuff, cause we, we won't be able to. No, cause we gotta buy trucks and employees, so there's no way you can take that back on right away.
Well, you gotta do the study first, you don't know that yet.
Oh, okay.
It, it would be a loan, you know, to get all that out, but we'd have to decide if the city would be able to make any money off of it.
Right, no, I, I, I just threw it out there, I'm not saying that.
It wouldn't be them doing it again, you, you do the business plan to have two personnel, a, a truck, a leased truck that's, under lease, it's new, and a truck of some sort, that'll get by, you gotta look at all that, and, cause they've got plans in their departments, and then you move on, so, that's something we're looking at, I mean. Anything to start, we are definitely.
Oh, I know you are, I'm just saying that this year, it sounds like it's out.
The contrast will look.
So we had, okay, I'm gonna backtrack Phil, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
Next in order is the fire department, so the, one of the big things on the fire department, Denny is being really, really easy with his budget, but we had. We had budgeted a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for a truck for this year, we're gonna carry it on to the next year. We may not even get it this year, this next fiscal year, we may have to carry it on to next, but I don't wanna lose that money into the general fund and then try to come up with a later, so that's why I'm carrying that.
Who's just standing here, Mark, for that, keep it out of the way.
Columbia is trying to get their new truck, we are hoping to get, grab ahold of their truck that they're offloading, and that's what that hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars is for.
That's what's in the budget, is a hundred and sixty-five thousand, and six, we have to drop that whole bucket at one time?
Yes, if we had to pay for that right now, we have that money, but we don't have a truck, so, and we may not get it next fiscal year, so I wanna leave that in. We're also going to add a little bit of money for training, um, he's got two new, um, volunteer firemen, and I wanna make sure that, um, there's enough budget money in there. Down, I guess I did, my tab. Um, we're gonna set aside a total of fifteen thousand dollars for new radios and pagers, they're desperately needed, um, so you'll see that in there. Also, three sets of turnout gear, some of this stuff we can apply for with ARPA money, I'm still waiting to hear if we're gonna qualify for that twenty thousand dollar match, so that'll help offset the, um, execution equipment that we already bought. Um, also, there's a little bit of money set aside in here to fix the front door of the fire department that's broke. So that's what you're seeing in there, he's not asking for a lot of money, there's really not that big of an increase that you're gonna see. In fact, I'll leave that much down, from what we've budgeted the previous year, so. So that's the fire department, any questions on the fire department?
Sure. We have a ballpark idea of what we're saving from the animal control, the cats, the, the facility upgrade that we were talking about.
Oh, most of the, um, main site builds were from cats, we're in it.
Take it for rabies shots and all that stuff, so that's gonna.
It's an amount, it's not gonna be a lot.
I think, yeah, twenty, twenty thousand dollars budget for the building, give me a twenty thousand dollars.
We have forty thousand dollars budget for the building, Matthew.
We, uh, we're gonna work, the departments are gonna work, we're gonna, uh, we've discussed with Harland, laid out some options, once we get a little time here, you know, that may be. We're gonna reskin, uh, upgrade the exterior, the interior's really not in bad shape, Sandy's talking about maybe wanting a few different.
There's a sink and stuff, don't you hear?
Sure, there's a sink in there, maybe storage stuff inside, uh.
But you're gonna have that where the cats were now, though.
Yes, that's, that's gonna be open, and then we're gonna build kind of a lean-to that's gonna fully, um, shelter the, the dog runs, and putting your ten on it and upgrade that, I would say.
Ten grand?
I would say probably closer to five, if I ballpark.
But if you say ten, we can get thirty back there.
Yeah, I mean, ten, ten absolutely maximal, but I would say between the metal and the few posts that we're gonna have to put in, I would say, I would say probably closer to five, but go ten just to be safe, so.
So if they catch a dog and it doesn't have its rabies and we pay for it, do we charge that back to the?
Yeah, they gotta pay for it for the good dog.
Well, that's thirty k.
Okay, so, pre-budgeted for this year in capital for the street department, this has been promised for a few years, over on Miles Street, the Miles Street ditch, so you know how half of it's the real nice concrete, the other half is dirt, we're having, um, pretty, um, pretty good complaints from the people who live on the dirt side, because the water's coming through there so fast, they're getting, um, just like eaten away at it, and it's just eroding really bad, it's difficult to mow. Um, so, in talking with Matthew and Phil, we have found, instead of spending, what did I say that was?
Hundred and fifty, third though.
Yeah, it was like two hundred thousand, I think, for.
Over the next two years, planning on spending two hundred thousand dollars, we're going to, instead of doing concrete, cause concrete's super expensive, Phil was figuring it out, and we believe we can riprap, um, that, the entire side of it, and it will slow the water down enough to where it doesn't flood the park.
It made, it made a big difference where y'all did that.
Yeah.
Where we made that first turn, where you're saying, you know, back here, it made a huge difference.
Yeah.
So it'll make a lot of difference.
And that hole only costs us thirty.
We did the whole ditch.
Yeah, I'm sure we ripped that all up, yeah.
And it costs us thirty-five thousand dollars, total, to do the entire length.
Or, well, the budget this year.
The budgeted amount of two hundred thousand, it would've cost us more, because concrete's gone, gone up so high.
So in this budget, what's there?
Thirty-five thousand dollars, and we can do the entire.
So you've already adjusted the budget for it?
Yes, we can do the.
All right, I was thinking we had.
We can do that entire ditch, get it out of the way, and make those residents happy, and like I said, if we would've done concrete through there, we were gonna end up with a drainage problem at the end, because of water.
We're just making it faster and faster.
Yeah.
Really sweet.
So, that's just, we think that's gonna be a good, a good fix.
So that's, so the thirty-five's in the budget, so we can finally get that down.
Mm-hmm, and then we also have sixty thousand in the budget to finish up the Jefferson, um, street ditch on the school side.
Now, is, is that part of the hundred and eighty-four thousand you're proposing for street maintenance?
No.
No, that'd be stormwater.
Good, good, I, I'll, thank you for that, storm drains, that storm drain is what we're saying.
We, we actually have all the concrete pipe and all the inlets.
Understood, we're gonna find out from Harland, too, we're gonna check on Harland, by to see if that stuff that we bought for that could be actually reimbursed, or they would help finish that, so that's another one that we're going after as well, so maybe somebody pick up there, a pretty good chuckle.
Any ARPA money that we can get for stormwater, that could pay for Phil's projects, all that other money that we would've budgeted for that, can go right back into the general revenue fund.
We can, there's a real chance for us to make.
I can't keep it? Can we, no, do they, do they usually have a, a backtrack date on full tax, like with the east side being?
Well, it depends on the playing rules, they, they change them, so when the next phase comes in, which is coming out, came out, we need to find, is it reciprocal back to a project you started?
Yeah.
Because so many people have found, because of the cost going up, they need help to make it with their programs, or whatever their infrastructure is. If it's infrastructure, it's a one-time payment, that's what they're looking for, to, that would give for years ahead, so, yeah, so I think there's some real opportunity there. These are probably the most solid things we have.
At the listening session, they made it really clear that infrastructure is what's gonna change the face of a community the most, and it's not something that relies on more money coming in to keep it going, so, um, some of our infrastructure projects may get approved, just because it's, it's gonna make a big impact on our community, without costing a lot of money down the road that we may have to be able to maintain. So that's what it is, um, let's see, move that. To keep her goes.
You both are putting around all the three signs.
So that's what we want after.
No, it won't.
It was budgeted already last year, but, or for the proposed this year.
Storm drains, storm drainage hundred ninety-six, we have thirty-five, we have sixty, what else is in that?
Um, so we had budgeted fifty thousand dollars for storm, uh, sewer lining and repair for this year, we didn't spend it, so I was going to move half of that over, cause we had twenty-five thousand pre-budgeted for this year, um, so I was just gonna move half of that to make it, uh, actually, no, I didn't, I made that a full seventy-five thousand dollars. We have a lot of stormwater problems here in town.
But, but again, something that we can, maybe, that's more Harland, Harland, you may.
Right.
Right, but if we're, if we're trying to, trying to balance this budget here, we have a sixty thousand dollar project for doing the other half of Jefferson, a thirty-five thousand proj- thirty-five thousand dollar project for doing the drainage, is that enough for the year, and we pull some money out of there, or are there other key projects that we need to do? If we don't get ARPA money, I mean, we gotta plan a night, right?
Right, yeah.
So if we get ARPA, if we get ARPA reimbursement.
You're good.
We can add what's on the wish list, project three, four, or five, if this long as the money's there, but, trying to think of.
I mean, there'll be need to be some to cover culverts and other small drainage stuff, so.
But is that a hundred K, which is about what we have in here right now, is.
Yeah, I mean, ninety-five thousand, what you're talking about, so, hundred ninety-six would be a hundred thousand, be close to, that catches it.
Yeah, I mean, do we, do we need to keep twenty in here for the miscellaneous stuff that pops up on top of the two projects?
And give seventy out of the.
Uh, I'm just, there's a lot of things we would love to do, but if we don't get ARPA funds, is, can we pull seventy out of here and?
So probably, okay, so we had two hundred and two thousand budgeted for this year, we spent a hundred and one thousand, have we already bought all the.
We've got the pipe.
Paid for all the pipe.
The pipes paid for, the inlets are paid for, so that, that's all done, basically just rock, dirt, and more concrete.
Which we have majority of the dirt, um, we may have to buy some.
Yeah.
Dirt at the tail end of it, to see what we come up with, but, um, rock and, and then concrete, but.
If we get two good projects happen the next year, is that good, and do we need a hundred and twenty here versus hundred ninety-six, that's, I get what I'm saying, I mean.
Yeah, we need to make sure we finish whatever takes, and we finish the little side for the ice, probably, right? Just with the nose one, the bottom.
Some buffer for the odds that's gonna pop up.
We need to get the twenty-five buffer, I mean, you just never know.
No, no, get it.
I'm saying, we definitely leave that buffer, does that mean we need a hundred and twenty, like a hundred and twenty in versus a hundred and ninety in? I'd rather tell you, you only got two big projects than have to cut something critical or something, and knowing that we'll do another two projects the next year, and if we get ARPA money, we can do more, and then.
That's right. Yeah, for the ARPA money to be of value to us, it's gonna be in these kinda projects, we gotta hope to get some up, cause we don't, we just gotta look, we just can't count.
Yeah.
Okay.
In the, the listening session, it sounded like these lined up right in the wheelhouse of what they're looking for, and what they push one through, pull through.
And the street maintenance, will this match that, or incoming type thing?
Uh, yes, so street maintenance is just, that line item is all your repairs.
That's paving, the paving and the roads.
That's, that's not paving, this is just street repairs, this is, my street is busted up, come and fix it.
Patch material, concrete, that's where some of that, when they dig holes in the road.
Yeah.
Type of funding, that's what's out of there.
So where's this, where's the street paving at in here?
I have not, you're not gonna see the capital projects yet, um.
Yeah, the paving is on, completely separate.
Paving is paid for transportation sales tax, and.
We pretty much, what comes in goes out, I mean.
Yeah.
So that's.
The money we get from Rota Bridge and, um, transportation, transportation sales tax is what pays for us to do our asphalt projects, and send over sidewalk funds.
And how much did we end up not doing this year, you, you were kinda, can't remember that.
A bunch, yeah.
Was it fifty percent less, forty percent less?
Uh, I would say probably forty.
Forty's probably, I think we talked about that, right? The cost change, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just.
Matter of fact, it was clearly a month late, or a bit fifty percent, as we talked about, right, since the price came out, it would've looked, they were late to here. Got it.
On the next one, or anything else?
So I guess I didn't put trash on there.
Oh, you did.
Yeah, it's on. I'll do the next one. Oh, okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and do this while we've got Phil talking. Um, so, trash fund, I fixed that, so it's not bad. Before, when I was looking at it, we were gonna be a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars short, but, we're not buying a hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck, so I took that off. That's like a pretty, pretty healthy in there, um, I'm not sure Dane's can, no, we're not gonna have Dane, we're going to have to figure out, we really need to get into working on that, we need to do a cost study to see what it would cost for us to take it over with two employees, two trucks, and getting, you know, what that's gonna cost, what it's gonna cost to offload it, all the trash and all that stuff, and to do the commercial dumping. And, um, and then decide if we wanna take it over, and then if we don't wanna take it over, we've gotta put out an RFQ.
What does that contract do?
I believe October.
We need to get the RFQ out regardless, I think.
Oh yeah, for sure.
Cause we need to do compare costs.
You gotta compare costs and what you can get it done for. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. We're, we're good at a lot of things, are we good at taking care of trash?
We used to be.
To what, to what extent was we were good at though? Because we picked up everybody's stuff that was extra hard at the time.
We were good at it in the fact that we, it never made money. It lost.
We were too generous.
Yeah.
I would say when it come down to it, we were too generous. You could clean out our house and you could put all our trash out there and the city was gonna pick it up and not charge no more for picking it up. We were too generous on the trash.
Yeah.
I mean, we were.
Yeah.
I wanna get into another sinkhole type thing.
Well, I would think you can went to, you know, why you set the same parameters as these other folks, gonna pay for it if we do pick it up. I mean, you have to have the cost, but you gotta be apples for apples, what you paid for today, what's at service today in that contract? And you go from there. I mean, you have to check third party, anything you third party, you have to check everything, when the contract comes due, and you gotta self-inspect whether you are on it or not still. It's just good business to do that, so. And if you're not, I mean, you're about to walk off, you know, if somebody asks, cause my people carry on about the trash and the recycling. And I sat there with a Dr. Pepper and talked to him for.
I would just soon get rid of that.
Forty-five minutes and they asked, I guess, well, you know, I'm a real, but you know, how you doing, where are you from, you know, where's your address? And I talked to about nine people and five of them, where are you from Centraic? I mean, and they said, look, it's a Centraic.
Moment. I shared this with you, Tara, just sure everyone else. In the manufacturing world, you're, you're good at some things and you're okay in others, the things you're okay, you outsource.
Sure.
Um, is trash something we should continue to outsource?
I will tell you, I know we have issues with Danes, but the issues we have with Danes are no worse than any other towns' trash providers.
No worse, nowhere near what we dealt with in the past, I guarantee that.
And you want, and to some level with Danes, it's really easy to see, are, are, is it our incoming paying for outgoing? Cause we're paying Danes and we got all the money to.
And, and like Wayne said, there's a lot of people still spoiled that, well, they don't pick up everything. Well, we had even quit that, you remember, in the last couple of years, we had to finally start tightening down because you can't even dump, do one truck and do the whole route. We had to use two trucks just for, you know, certain days. You can't do it all just one load, cause you're picking up so much.
Well, in the town, it's gonna get worse.
I don't know how you feel, whether we're great at trash versus the rest of the, you know.
Both of us, it's the best thing we do.
I'll, I'll say Phil, Phil's on the same side of things.
I'll say that. I, I, I think we should, we should bid it out, I mean, I hear, I mean, it's, just like anything else, you hire, you hire somebody to do, you need to bid it out. And make sure you didn't bankrupt your buck, there's a lot of pros and cons to having it in-house, but it's gotta be feasible, and it wasn't in the past.
Personally, I mean, there's people who specialize in taking care of trash, are they perfect? No.
Well, there are gonna have certain people you can't.
You gotta think, when we got out of the trash business, they didn't have automated trucks to pull up, pick up trash, go on. They didn't have that.
Can we afford buying two of those, even if one's used? Not right now.
I talked to a vendor the other day and they said it will be at least two-year delivery time for a trash truck.
We're not gonna be in the trash business in October.
Right, and so do we.
We would have to either extend the Danes or, uh, go out the bin for someone else to do it for the next two years, so that on our feet in order to do it.
Well, our third-party people are bonded, they bought us all food and bonds, that's why they have bonds.
That's why, we just, we need to go out for bed, we still need to get the feasibility study.
Oh yeah.
We still need to do the feasibility studies so we know what the costs are, so we have an idea.
And in our mind, we.
We need to go out for bed, cause there's no other option.
True, we, we can't have it for them, we had to start it for them.
Yeah, absolutely. I know, uh, the vendor that was talking, he, Marshall was getting ready to switch over to the automated side of things. Uh, they had actually purchased all the roll cards, hired a third company to put their names and addresses on the roll cards. And then the council at the last meeting to approve it, one hundred percent, they backed out.
Oh man.
So, I told the salesman, I said, that's not a promising thing to tell me at the moment if you're trying to sell, throw, you know, trash drivers. But one of the biggest things he said that they're, with the roll cards are, are the elderly community nervous about being able to get those out to them.
Well, the Leonard, they, they are hard to get to the street where you can pick them up with an automated truck.
Try living in Michigan and having one, I have, it's not easy. But, yeah. I mean, we gotta go out for bed no matter what at this point.
Yeah, we hope our come in. We hope our come is providing a lot. They got something, they got some things to take care of here. But yeah.
We're tail-ending on.
You all done?
Yeah, we're done.
Someone made a motion to adjourn.
I, I, I don't miss those, send it there.
Okay.
Water, is that where we're at?
Yes.
Yeah.
Here in water. Okay, so with water. We've got the final payment for the water meter replacement, um, we actually got in over half of them this fiscal year, so that number's gonna be smaller. Because we had to pay more, it's more.
Does that fall into that five hundred and forty-seven thousand that's there?
It's in three oh six by five eight by five oh eight.
Yeah, maybe the five hundred and forty-seven.
The three oh six account?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that four ninety-six will come down, so?
Probably have to change that.
What's good to do in the future? One thing you gotta do, I mean, some of our expense that we aren't having now.
Yeah, it'll go down just a little bit, yeah.
With non-soffined water, it's gonna double. So what we get by with this year not paying anything, it goes from four thousand to eight thousand plus chemicals if the, the needs to have chemicals. So that's another, could be, could be thirty-six thousand dollars of cost, so thirty-two thousand or more, forty thousand dollars of cost potentially.
Do we have the increased costs in here for that stuff, like the new rates or?
Mm-hmm.
For the, all the chemicals?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we increased. Um, okay, so starting at three ten, what?
I was seeing what you were checking.
Well, I have my original sheets from my first meeting.
Oh, okay, okay.
Um, so let's see. So we did go on just a little bit, um, in training, uh, we've got new, um, new employees in the water department, they're gonna be working towards air hours and all that stuff. And we've been a little bit behind because of COVID and then shut stuff down, so instead of doing online stuff, we get back into in-person. Um, I don't mean to go well, line by line, but, um, we've had some big expenses pop up in the water department. As Aaron and Matthew told you earlier, with the high-service pump, the two high-service pumps, one of them will be paid out for out of this. Did we only have about one service pump, didn't we?
Yes, so we, we had a pump go out, it's being refurbished now, um.
That was number one, two was leaking.
Two, two started leaking three days after we pulled, um, the first one. So just so you guys are aware, the high-service pump, um, that, those two pumps are what send the water to the towers. So when those pumps go out, no water goes to the towers. And you turn your faucet on.
No pressure.
And you have no water, so those are pretty, you know. Okay, okay.
Thanks, Chris.
But. So, um, those, those couple things were, um.
And the other one, the backwash pump with the spring balance leak, or we're not, we can go without the backwash pump right now. And then there's also what I mentioned, nineteen eighty-one, so we're going to.
So is the money to retrofit the other two in there?
All of these things are in there, and yes, we, we can apply for ARPA funding for some of it. Um, the other big ticket item is well three. It needs to be upgraded and we are planning forty thousand dollars this year. And how much next year?
Thirty thousand.
We're ready to source it.
Seven to eighty.
Seven, yeah, seventy thousand, whatever, just made that this year, absolutely, I think it's probably gonna go up between now and next year.
But if we get it all in the ARPA, you're ready to do it.
Yes.
And it's a hell of a net.
No, no, I'm not saying, I'm saying, if we can get it, we do it.
You're a long way, you don't have no infrastructure problems.
We know it's a big if, but that's why we're only, I think it's smart to butt it half of it this year and rely on.
Right.
Yeah, but the well three is worth.
The wonderful thing is, is you get, get that fifty thousand dollars back, cause we get the ARPA grant and we don't have to have a bring it in this year at all, so that gives you back that. But, but that's the best case scenario. We have, we have to deal with reality of, worst case scenario.
Land on lower and if we get, forget it.
That's great.
Okay, so in distribution, um, you wanna talk about the vehicle?
The, so that is the, the vehicle for the distribution one, that's really realistically for the, the plant truck is correct, right? The, the truck that we're. So, we are, and this is gonna fall under Matt's category too, we've got a couple two-wheel drive vehicles. Um, where especially the treatment and plant truck, um, Jay or that, that person, position, they are in charge of checking the reservoir levels, not only our system, but we also have to, um, check the farmer spaces also because they are on our system. We have to report that every month, we have to take measurements on how much free board's there and this and that. Um, where the pump, one pump house is, you are making it a dual-drug truck. Um, it is.
The one you kinda go for the ledge, that you just have to know where, where the road is.
You've probably not been out there.
You've not been out there. It's, it's the furthest, um, it's at the Bonoyt reservoir that we add to the system, uh, but you, you cannot. Yeah, maybe you did, uh, with Mike.
You drive through to the cornfield?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Under some.
Take the ride at the vehicles.
Yeah.
Which would be the opposite next year.
So, um, we are looking to, we are looking to do that, um.
So we have a four-wheel drive vehicle, we need to go out there to check that, in the three?
Well, we've got a duly truck that we got last year, um, and then Aaron's truck, we, we have his that he could switch out with Jay.
Just asking.
Yeah, no, no, that's an option, I mean, you, but then, yeah.
The plan made me get one, but not get it immediately, would that be in the budget?
I, I, I'm not sure who approved two-wheel drive trucks for the municipality, but it is one.
One situation they had this year, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna tell an embarrassing story about Matt. He had to get rescued because his truck got stuck. When we're doing these projects out in the subdivisions and stuff, where they go out to the fields to do the electric.
Oh.
Yeah.
That doesn't sound too embarrassing.
We've got water department and electric department going out to the fields to get all of this done, or do maintenance on the electric that's going out to the pumps, or they're going out and checking stuff, so, um, when Matt went out there, he got stuck and he had to wait for his crew to come out and pick him up because he couldn't get out of the field.
Well, go, it was alright. You got trapped there out there.
Yeah, so that's the.
That was probably, you should've called me.
The treatment vehicle.
You were there too.
You should've called me.
As that digger truck got stuck, we pulled it out.
So what did that darn crew?
I would assume, I think it'll be probably lower than that, but.
Have you looked at truck prices recently?
Huh? Well, I know we got a duly with a fourteen thousand dollar bet on it for like fifty-six dollars.
I know, but they wanted to raise the price significantly, but we told them they had to honor the purchase order.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
And we then ordered a duly, they gave us that so they could fulfill their order.
Yeah, so that's, that's what the vehicle is, um, one of those things that, can we switch trucks? Yes, Aaron's tools are in, and equipments in his truck.
It's a pen, yes.
Um, so you can do it, it's doable, everything's doable.
Well, just hauling stuff anymore, like all of our truck.
I get it, yeah.
It's just a.
They should all be forward, I do.
Well, even three-quarter tons to begin with anyways.
Well, not the plant truck.
Oh, I got you, or.
The plant truck's not gonna pull anything, it's strictly to go to water wells, sewer pump houses, um, but, you know.
But why wouldn't you go ahead and buy a three-four ton for the plant in case one of Craig's trucks has broke down, you do need to pull something.
I guess you could.
I mean, you're gonna buy a truck, you might as well buy something that you can use throughout everything.
I, you know, I agree with that, I just know that most, most people don't agree with that type of. I mean, I, I would love to be able to plan and have equipment for every situation.
I mean, if Craig's truck breaks down and he needs to pull something, he can go get the plant truck, it's three-four ton, it'll pull everything we got. If you buy a half-ton, his truck's broke down, he can't pull nothing.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're gonna buy a truck, buy a truck that'll do something with it.
I mean, it would be good if we could, I'll say standardize at that right level consistently, we might, might as well pull the trigger on everything at once, obviously. But it would be good, I mean, depending, I don't know what the dollar difference would be, I mean, but I know it's not huge in the scheme of things for buying a truck. We'd be going from a.
No, if you get forward ground.
I mean, if you're gonna buy a half, you might as well buy a car or L for the plant truck. If you're gonna buy a truck.
I actually was wondering.
A half ton truck, I might as well buy a Ford Ranger, if you're gonna buy.
Drive.
You know.
My motor's scared.
Yeah, Ford escape.
Let's just get an AV vehicle.
Yes. Can't, our electric can't support it. You throw out dumb ideas, but.
That's dumb ideas, it's a joke. We're not looking at twenty-eight chargers out of Jim Fuller.
Put it in a new building, man.
Try getting rebuyed.
So you're saying there's a truck in the water?
I think we only have a small truck.
It's in three oh six.
And how much did you get funded for that truck?
Fifty thousand.
And it can be concealed cab, right? I mean, it doesn't have to be.
Yeah, I mean, you could. We're, we're, if we get a, if we get a four-door truck, they were, they were not buying any more half-door crew cab trucks, yes.
No.
Chris didn't like trying to squeeze in that.
Well, if you're gonna have, that's, that's what I think, you should be probably four-wheel drive, you should first standardize, you ought to have something that's probably affordable, you could multi-use for crews, you know, I mean.
The price that I found for a three-quarter ton crew cab, gas pickup, for a twenty-three, this wasn't a twenty-four by any means, but it was forty-three seven is what it was, when I found it two months ago.
And what did you have in the budget?
Fifty. I, I, I called three dealerships, um, neither of them would put it, they don't even have the, the truck in their system right now that they can even build for the twenty-threes. They've, they've skipped twenty-threes now, those are done, um, it's moving to twenty-fours, and they wouldn't give me a hard number on it, obviously. But they said that they don't intend on it being over fifty thousand, uh, they just can't build the truck right now.
I know, the truck you got, you talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what you need, right?
Yeah. Straight work truck.
So you kinda checked and you said the list of fifty, so it's, it's good. So you kind of checked and you said the list of fifty, so it's, it's good.
Yeah.
And then we did increase, um, operating supplies and distribution for the chemical and line, um. We're not gonna have to buy that for a couple quarters this year, so. Minus that six hundred thousand in there. What did I do that for? We've got fifty-two thousand dollars on other equipment. In three oh seven.
Treatment operations in there, yes.
Do you remember what it was, Mary?
Slacker.
No, we got.
Well, we, in the distribution, we added some for the.
Valves. That would be three oh six.
Yeah, three oh six, we added some for valves.
Three oh seven?
Ah, three oh seven was the, we'd added forty thousand for the well grater repairs.
I had that back in three oh three.
Okay, what about the backwash and ice service pump?
That would be, that would be treatment.
Ah, okay, so that's that then, okay.
That's why that one's up.
Yeah.
The adopted versus the proposed.
Anything else to tell us what the water was?
Aaron, do you have anything?
No, I don't know what that, like it is.
Okay, switch on over to, to sewer. So, Aaron, do you want to talk about the sewer lining?
Yeah, I was looking on the last page there.
Yep.
Where you had a hundred thousand.
Are you on the one that, from our meeting, or?
From the sheet you gave us.
You got an ARPA, I know ARPA paid a hundred thousand for sewer line.
Never mind, do we, do I have another hundred thousand for ARPA this year, or is that moving the hundred thousand? On the last sheet of the budget this year.
You're looking at ARPA?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Very well, very well.
Cause we talked about.
There's a mistake there then, because we had.
We have one fifty-five and one hundred for this fiscal year.
We had a hundred. We had a hundred fifty-five budgeted a hundred thousand ARPA.
So, in the budget book for ARPA, we had. Okay, so we had budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and we're taking an extra hundred thousand up, so yes, you have a hundred thousand ARPA this fiscal year and a hundred thousand next fiscal year.
So I have activated between the two budgets. Two budgets. Okay, that will make, was your sewer, you have to.
Yeah.
Cause you had two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this fiscal year.
And we'll have another two hundred and fifty next year. Right? So we talked about putting our free budget, a hundred and fifty thousand, and then we'll save another hundred thousand ARPA.
Do we need to do that much?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We probably need to do a million dollars.
We're cutting some money here, that's why I'm asking.
We, we just think too many, one or two million dollars, and you should not touch our infiltration.
So, the fund that needs cut is a general fund.
Yeah.
Your utility funds are pretty healthy and they've kept their, um, so when they tell you they need something, they've really kind of cooled it down to what is needed. So we don't end up with bigger expenses down the road, um, their wants, I, I have those listed too, but they know that they're probably getting it off this way.
So with the, and I haven't talked to Perry yet about this, I called, talked to Major Sewer, who's doing, uh, who has the contract for last year, two hundred and fifty thousand. If we can, if I can go ahead and get some other mains to him, he can tack that on with this year's, with last year's price. And continue and just do all of it when it comes to town.
So our problem with busy sewer this fiscal year, they can't get here by the end of our fiscal year, so we can't pay them this fiscal year for work they haven't done yet.
So we've talked about rolling all that money over and just.
Which I haven't.
It'll still be two separate contracts, it'll still be two separate contracts, does y'all already approve the one contract, but.
So you're gonna roll two hundred and fifty over from this year's budget over, and then you got another two hundred and fifty.
Should do a half million.
So you got a half a million dollar.
Half a million, yes, not a billion.
Half a million.
Two quarter million dollar projects.
Yes.
Yeah, but it, I didn't know that, they're gonna give it to us at last year's prices.
If I can get them some stuff, if I can get them some stuff here fairly quickly and we can get it back to the board, uh, I find that out Friday.
Well, probably try to get it next week.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that was pretty cheap, wasn't it?
Yeah, by next week.
Yeah, I won't have it for next week, uh, cause he's gotta come up here and actually look at the mains, uh, but I can have it for the March meeting. And, and he's still good with automatic programs, so.
Is there anything you need board input on on the sewer?
On the sewer? Not really, um, the sewer lining is the biggest project they've got going on, um. The back truck is supposed to be here by the end of March, right?
Supersolutely.
If it is not here, we'll have to move that money over to this fiscal year. And then.
It's also supposed to be here at December.
In three twenty-eight, you'll see quite a bit of money, but that is for, um. Actually, why isn't that there? That number's gonna have to go up, we've got to, because of D and R regulations, we're gonna have to start putting aside a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars a year for equipment replacements, all of our caddits and everything. We purchased and we have to maintain.
We gotta start building that file.
Yes, so it's a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars a year that will be put now, and that's not in there, so.
That's in three twenty-eight.
Three twenty-eight. But I believe that's. That's it on sewer.
Electric needs a truck, what else do we need?
For the electric department?
What do you need? I'm trying to say for folks alone, what do you, what do you need board input on?
So we are gonna need board input, and this affects all the departments. So we can wait until the end for that one if you want. Okay. Alright, Mr., Mr. Matt.
I'll, I'll have that.
Pull that out quick, okay. So it looks like we're needing a trencher.
It's one of those Digo trenchers, like Danny's got, but it'll have a backfill bucket, there's also a, like, front hoe attachment for it. And then also the trencher for it as well. Just kind of talking to them about it, I'd like to offset the cost with it, I got a bid for like, I think it was like sixty-six five. I looked up for an older trencher with like two thousand less, or more hours than what our current one does, our current one has a hundred and eight, it doesn't get utilized. It's impractical for what we need to use it for. Mainly, the, most of our underground comes from burying backyard easements, well, we can't get that trencher in anywhere without taking out a fence. And if we're gonna take out a fence, we might as well go ahead and dig it with many, because, A, we can, I know it, it's a smaller trench. But we can get it backfilled better and then also clean it up better with new material.
You like access, there's no year to well.
Yeah.
And so we can get out, we can get out as little as little hours on it.
Yes, correct. We can actually utilize this one more.
What'd you have on the, the older piece of, the older trencher, it went for fifty-seven thousand, right?
Uh, like what we bought it for?
No, no, the one re-cert.
Oh, it was like fifty-six thousand, fifty-six or fifty-seven thousand?
So we can sell, we're gonna keep the.
No, we're gonna sell that, offset that cost.
I got you, right.
To get this other with all of those attachments, and then we'll be able to use it, cause we can get through gates and everything else.
And you said this new one was sixty-six five?
Yeah, with all the.
So if you sold, if you're able to sell ours for, I don't know, my mind's a half of ten grand.
Yeah.
The last piece of equipment that we sold, we actually made more money out of it.
The, yeah, the skid loader that, uh, that we sold for the electric department, it was a two thousand and twelve model, um, we paid. Oh, shoot, I think forty-some thousand for that piece of equipment, whenever we bought it back in two thousand and twelve, and we made fifty-seven, uh, we, we sold it for fifty-seven thousand.
It's fifteen grand.
Yeah. Very good market to be in right now.
We'll, we'll hope that that sells more, to offset the Digo.
Even if we only have to pay ten grand for the new one, then you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then three-quarter ton pickup, which we already talked about, and then I'd like to get, I would like to replace all of our gut blankets. And then also upgrade, um, to some other cover-up blankets for crossarms, for tying-in phases, and then, um. Getting probably three extra pieces of gut for line cover for each truck, cause we've got six pieces now, I don't really care for that. I'd like to have a little bit more, so we can extend further out for working, you know, two separate poles or something, um, for each truck as well. And that's including the new truck that should be here, I think, the end of March.
That stuff should as well.
Yeah, so, and that, those numbers came off the right around sixteen thousand, for.
That's safety.
Everything that we need.
Gotta have it.
That's for PP, keep your team safe, I mean, that, we need, regardless.
I mean, we, we, we currently have that, I mean, could we get by with, you know, nine pieces of gut and then three blankets and then a slotted blanket for the new truck? We could, but.
You'd understand it all.
I think our current cover-up right now is, I think, close to fifteen years old.
Oh.
So, yeah.
Yeah, and then.
Does that stuff have to be recertified?
Whenever you say.
Yeah, it's supposed to be recertified every year.
Whenever somebody says, get by, and save the equipment, it makes me nervous.
Agreed.
It's supposed to be certified every year, we have, we're gonna do it, we're learning all that.
The la, the last time that we got our trucks that I like tested was when I started in like two thousand seventeen. And that was it, so, but we got them tested this year, so. But with Mermin, now we're testing them every year.
Yeah, those are high.
Yep, those are every six months, and that's been done for.
Those are my safe.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
Never kind of come, come safety, so.
Yep.
I'm gonna ask you, buy how much equipment?
Oh, that's all that I expect of them. I have one thing that's not, and it's solid, Mary, but that's cause I like it better. If I'm being honest, but everything else, all the, all the materials.
Yeah, you go pick up, it's gone.
What replaces?
The pickup or the Digo. The pickup or the Digo.
We're gonna go to that.
We're gonna give you a choice.
I'll take the pickup, I can take it. I got a one-ease, I'll take it.
Why are we?
Uh, that was a long discussion here, and I don't know that we ever.
What was it?
Came to a.
I mean.
Somebody on the board said take a skid loader and push.
That was me.
I know it was you.
My skid loader won't work, I got a dozer out there.
He asked if we are sending out letters about moving the fences whenever we're doing easement work. And I said, no, we had like one heated discussion about that, and then it just kind of. Remember when we were talking about the fences and the easements and. Are they moving it, or are we moving it, and he got really gray area really quick, so that's why I have not sent letters out.
Plus, we kind of ran out of transformers, so we're not really doing a whole lot of.
Well, we're still gonna be putting in infrastructure, we'll just, once transformers do come in, then we'll pull wire, put them up, and then we're, we'll be good.
And I guess we need to have that discussion again.
Let's not do it on budget.
No, I'm not saying no tonight, but we need to have that discussion pretty quick.
Um, so the transformers are going to be very expensive in twenty-four, so we are going to budget for half of what we would like to purchase. So we're gonna budget sixty-seven thousand dollars this current, this next fiscal year, and then the other half, but we're gonna.
Should we try by thirty, twenty of them?
Thirty.
Thirty, can you give us that?
Five thousand a piece.
How much?
Five thousand. Like forty-five hundred, five thousand.
Yes, good.
Um, Arkansas Electric has not gotten back to us, they're probably not going to until like June.
Uh, yeah, so the beginning of June is when they'll have their contract figured out, which doesn't make sense to me, cause he told me January, and then I called him about twenty times, and then he finally got ahold of me, and. He did, I, I do give him this, he called me the other day, actually, it was when we were in our budget meeting, and, um, he'd have ten come up, but somebody pushed away. And, um, problem is there, they're on hold.
Oh, you offered him, do you?
Yes. He said we'll, we'll be the first on his list.
Good.
But.
Do we need to give you, in our next meeting, give you guys a blanket approval for X amount of dollars for this, so that he?
When it comes up, you can buy it.
Yeah.
Go, can we add something?
See, we, I, right now, I can get on the books with Graybar.
We're getting an emergency board meeting.
Be an emergency.
But we're not expecting a contract until.
Like June.
And if you need to come for hand in this round of luggage, do you, do we need to give you a pre-approval for a certain amount of dollars?
Well, you can give me a verbal pre, pre-approval, and then we can tell them, yes, we want, and we have an emergency board meeting where you actually go.
I can order something now through a different company, but they're a difference, like, they're a different brand of transformer than what we normally use. There are GE Electric, I don't know a whole lot about them, I mean, don't get me wrong, I haven't been in this game very long, but, um. I can get on the books with someone right now, for sure, if we wanna order some, but they are also probably five to six thousand dollars a piece, a little bit higher than the other.
So, do you want me to put something on the next meeting, or you guys approve?
I, I just would love for you as well to have that response, to be able to respond.
We all agree with Dave, when people, when we fail, we wanna be able to.
Is there a number that you guys feel comfortable with, so it's becoming at three thirty-four? So we had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted for this current year, and spent a hundred and ninety-two already in this current fiscal year. Luckily, the electric department's usually pretty healthy, so we're not suffering.
I understand that there, yeah. And the costs are.
Ninety thousand dollars.
Then you're gonna have this out here, Ben, so.
Well, and that's why we're getting thirty.
Well, yeah, I think you'll put somewhere where you're, you're good to fifty thousand or whatever, not so many.
Whatever ten or fifteen might be, and if we wanna give a pre-approval, if you get that call, you could say, yes, I'll get you a PO this afternoon or whatever, or whether you guys have that approval.
Me and the works, we'll be able to do the fact that we're in a emergency state, supply for transformers, we give you the authority, or me the authority to approve a PO for. Up to, up to, ten transformers, not to be more than X amount per piece or something, whatever. That way we don't have to have a special meeting, an emergency meeting, that's something that we're gonna say you get too many, but I mean.
Yeah, so fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah, yeah, that's what, so. So you're gonna order some tomorrow?
That way if you get, yeah, that way if some, if you get that call.
I mean, I can't, I mean, like, I know, like, the guy Danny Sims at a Graybar.
So how mu, how much more are these than what you're, you can buy the over waiting?
About fifteen hundred bucks. A piece, thousand fifty.
What brand are we buying from Graybar?
Uh, GE.
So do you want to buy those or are you just wanting to?
I don't have the right calls, cause we're not gonna get them in twenty twenty, or like, we'll get them in twenty twenty four anyways, so to me, if we go with Ermco's, which we normally have. And we have in stock.
That you're familiar with.
That I'm familiar with, which, I mean, stud spacing and you can go, lug should all be the same, but.
What are you familiar with?
That's kind of, where.
Well, so how many do we have?
On stock, right now, um, I would say we've got two, we got two fifties, we got maybe. Maybe one or two twenty fives.
Uh, I think we, we need to, even if a higher cost, order a couple of these to have this little bit more of a buck. Not for, and the others for production, I'm just saying, I mean.
I don't wanna second guess Matt there, but I was just talking about doing a pre-approval, see if you respond if adoption could live, but if he's.
I mean, we, we've got enough on stock to where, you know, okay, if we need to do this. And I've already told Darren's guys out at North Point, like, I know where he's gonna continue on next. And I told him, I'm like, I'm gonna rob from you before somebody else in town's gonna come with that power.
Well, if you think you've got fifties and twenty fives that you can get ahold of right now to get by, then that's okay. We do the fifty and whether after it comes, you can get the Ermco.
So they're like Arkansas Electric caution, they do have the bright voltage, you have. Okay. Anything else, Matt? That I may have forgotten? I was worried it'd be much later, actually, like midnight. Okay, the last thing that we need for some board, uh, direction on what you think here, okay, so right now. This, we've already kind of talked about this a little bit, we talked about, um. What we currently offer the crews with the safety money. But if you're hired at the wrong time, then it's, you know, you get it for a long time. The uniforms are through UniFirst, we're currently spending right about five hundred a month, right, Marilyn? Our bill every month's right around five hundred dollars per uniform. Yeah, like six. Six hundred a month. It's kind of going down a little bit. So, um, I asked the guys, some of these things we currently already, um, provide. There's just a few things that we don't. And then, okay, so safety equipment. Kind of copy that I had starred that we actually provided, okay. So, face coverings, do we currently provide those? No? Gloves, we do.
Yep.
Head lamps?
Yep.
Hard hats?
Yep.
Eye spikes?
Yes.
Winter coats?
Yes.
Rain suits?
Yeah, was that a mixed response?
I mean, I don't want to hear any of that. No, winter coat. Sorry?
You're fine.
No, you're fine, I just.
I'm working off his list right now. Okay, uh, waiters?
Yes.
Work boots?
No.
Vests?
No.
Vests with safety money, bibs, safety money, insul- uninsulated mud boots and insulated mud boots.
Right now, water department has insulated, insulated mud boots, but you're not supplied, uh, uninsulated.
Okay. Alright, so, electric department, you do not have winter coats?
Nope.
And these are, these are reflective.
Yeah, it's not just carpet or something.
Yeah, we don't.
They don't have any.
They don't have any.
Yeah.
Even, uh, like FR bibs.
Yeah.
So. We had talked about all this, Aaron, um, brought me a list and.
It's really just the, the bibs.
The bibs, the vests and the boots and the face covering.
Or the four items that are not.
Right now, we get a hundred and fifty dollars a year for, of safety money. A pair of boots is a hundred and fifty dollars. That's all, yeah.
FR one for, well, they're not FR, actually they're electrical hazard, but, um, they're two hundred bucks.
That hundred and fifty dollars has been in the union contract since, I think it was ninety eight.
Yeah, it hasn't been changed since the ninety.
Since nineteen ninety eight. Uh, so we were all talking about possibly doing away from the safety bonus money. And the city providing work boots on a timeframe of, I think, a freaking, eighteen, twenty four months. A timeframe of, of there.
The wear.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if, if you wear it outside of work and they wear it out before you, it's on you. Yeah, and then the same with the vests and the bibs, cause at the water department, when I started over there, we, I brought my own bibs in. Well, when we go out and work on a week, those would be frozen and wet for two to three days, so. I, I actually not bought three pairs of bibs just so I could grip it through on, on the snowy days or the weeks or this or that. So that's, that's where we're coming from with this list. Uh, but, when it was bitter cold, uh. Luckily, all my guys had, had the bibs at home that they could, they could wear, but as of right now, the city does not provide bibs. Insulated bibs for.
So when we provide these things that you have on your list, do you provide it from a, a supplier that you have pricing with or do they just? Buy wherever they want to.
We, so we got a price list and we, we put a price list together.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
That'd be good to have, I mean.
We put a price list together and, like, I went up to Albert's and lacrosse boots, insulated boots, I was like, those price. If someone wants muck boots or.
Well, they can pay the difference. We give them some out and then, for this item and this item, and that's good for eighteen months or whatever it is and then, then, then at that time.
And, and then at that time, it's, it's not all I'm up for, it's, hey, mine's wore out.
Right.
And it's, it'll be up to us as supervisors, yes, it is wore out or. The, the timeframe on there is just kind of, this is kind of where we think it's gonna be, but. If your winter coat's still good after five years, there's no point in buying another brand of winter coat.
I just have a problem buying it and then an employee take it home and it rips and they don't say nothing. And then something on the job happens, you know.
This is where we were kind of talking, like, your bibs, your bibs and your coat, stay at work.
Yeah.
I would say, anything that the city buys stays at work. You can't take your rubber boots home and use them at home.
Yeah, and. Everything the city buys right now stays at, at work.
Well, I, I think it makes sense, I mean.
For me, my, my boot, boots stay in my truck, the city truck.
Yes, yes.
The only thing, I would think would be different, you know, I think of, at a factory, I've worked at quite a few of them. People wear their steel toes home, most of the time their steel toes are sitting in their closet or sitting in their mudroom or something. Cause they're not gonna wear them through the house, cause they grease and other junk on them, um, you know, I wouldn't expect somebody to always leave their.
Yeah, the, the work boots. But I also do that, I take it off and I sit right next to my door and then.
Well, do you have them on a timeline, oh yeah, time, right?
Yeah, and those, um, all of those go down a timeline and then. And I've already kind of, with my guys, I've talked to them and, you know, if, if you wear it home and you tear them up, it's on you to replace them. I'm not, I'm not gonna have to buy you new one because you mowed your yard and cut the toe of your boot off.
The other thing that we had discussed with this is if an employee were to leave after getting all this, they have to reimburse us.
Yeah, that's. The backside of that paper, right?
Absolutely. And then, is there anything on here that you would say is not needed safety equipment in all reality?
No, um, another thing that the city provides that they didn't put on there because we just always take care of it is we pipe their high biz shirts. And, um.
The long sleeve t-shirts.
Long sleeve t-shirts and hoodies in the winter. We've, I don't know how long that's been going on, but that's what, that's what else we do, so that's, that's on here too, um.
I mean, are long, are those the only long sleeve shirts you all get, very?
Yeah.
I mean, they ought to be high biz too.
Well, it, we only get them in the winter, so they're covered by their coats, so they're not, they're not visible, that's the only reason why they're not high biz.
They still have to be high biz. I mean, if they're in the shop or whatever and they got it all, I mean, does insurance, does Merma cover it even if it's not on high biz? Cause our insurance won't. If we don't have high biz on, ours, they're all green. So, and if we don't have it all on insurance, then definitely.
They've never said anything about the gray shoes.
I mean, our shop, guys gotta wear them and everything.
We can double check that with them.
Yeah.
Make sure.
Okay. Um, and then the other thing on this, and this, this includes the boat, the boots for the police department, right now we pay for their entire uniforms. I mean, the hats, the gun belts, the, the coats, or wait, are we paying for beanies for you guys? No, not beanies, um, and then, uh. But their pants, their gun belts, all of that stuff, their uniforms, their vests, we pay for, but we don't pay for their boots, I thought that was a little strange, so. We're throwing that in here too.
Qualifies as PPE for a release after, I would say.
Yeah, we don't wear steel, steel toes, but.
But still, you don't want them stuck on, so. Cause they're wearing all boots.
And I, I think generally speaking, they're probably, the boots that they're gonna purchase are gonna be more than what's allowed anyway. So, I mean, but that's on them.
Yeah. Um, so, right now, what I was getting at with UniFirst, um. UniFirst allowed their product and their service to get way too bad for way too long. And now they've come back and they said that they can scan every garment before it leaves, that they know exactly how much needs to come back. Um, the guys are beyond frustrated, there were weeks where they would only have one or two pairs of jeans to get them through the week because UniFirst wouldn't bring them their stuff back. Um, we've had issues with, it was the wrong size, so they turn all of them in, but they lose them. But they tell us, we never turn them in, so then they tried to charge us for eleven pairs of jeans that we gave back to them, it's just, it's been.
Well, that district manager, general manager, world manager, wherever he came from, he was very impressive. For having a problem, he showed up for that day, do you all think?
No.
I was very happy with that.
He's our senior district sales manager.
Yeah, he had some sort of.
A year ago. We're stuck with them until December, yes, no matter what.
I'd say, there, there's a lock solid contract, I've tried to break one of those.
But they've had four turnovers. Part of the problem turnover, they don't trade people.
So, and we've talked about this, we're stuck with UniFirst, we have to, so if they decide that they don't wanna use UniFirst, they've been buying their own jeans and, or laundering them themselves, that's fine. Um, but for, when we end our contract in December, I'm going to see if we can. I'm gonna let them know that we're ending it, but we'd like to continue it until the end of March. I don't know if they'll do that or not, and then if the board would agree to this. They would just like to, if we could agree, and I think that this would overall save the city money. Um, buy each employee seven pairs of jeans the first year at forty dollars a piece. Um, they launder them themselves, it's two hundred and eighty dollars per employee. And for each department, be four, fourteen hundred dollars for the entire year. But then each year after that, only, uh, replace three pairs of jeans instead of, you know, five pairs of jeans. Cause they wear differently.
Well, how many, how many people we talking about here? It's only total.
Three utilities.
I mean, what's the total?
Fourteen people.
Fourteen people at two hundred and eighty dollars for the first year?
The electric departments, they were more.
It'll be like hundred, hundred and fourteen.
So it'll be five of them, about a hundred and twenty, and then.
Now, well, okay, so the electric department's a little different, they are in the union contract that they can choose to go with. Our uniform company or we would give them a stipend for their jeans. So, that's already in the union contract and their department is planning on doing that.
There's specialized equipment anyways, a little more than something.
Yeah, for some reason, we're in contract with fairly dominant for FR employees.
Similar over there, there's certain departments that have certain things.
So what we were.
We're better than you. Here we go.
His buildings, his buildings, they'll.
Hey, it's gonna rain in the middle of the week for the next six weeks, but.
We just gotta open up tomorrow while it's raining.
I did that.
I'm gonna drill a hole and then put a pipe right down to your desk.
So what, so what are we thinking here then, I mean, we're talking about two things, we've got jeans and we've got this other.
So the jeans, uh.
Would replace the UniFirst.
The UniFirst, the, the safety stuff would rese- replace those safety bonus, the hundred and fifty dollar safety bonus here. And the, the jeans. Our three departments is, are fine with holding out until the contract's over.
But then limit, then we eliminate the.
And the crews have offered to take care of cleaning and maintaining the, the rugs. At the hall.
Still think that's a bad idea. I think it's a horrible idea, I'm just telling you guys that, cause you all know.
Maybe we should put that on that then.
Cause you guys, you're gonna have weeks where you're gonna have time to do it and then you're gonna have weeks where. They absolutely have to be done and you're gonna run out of time and you're gonna, you're gonna jam it, so. I, I think that my personal opinion is that is a horrible idea, but. That's on you guys.
I think you contract somebody to bring the rugs in.
Yeah, we could see what that would cost.
Yeah, they'll, they'll do them and it just rubs four nerves.
Yeah, we would just, we would just bid it out again.
That's what I'm saying.
So two asks, one, are we okay with the jeans?
And you, and you.
And the safety equipment.
People are, and your, the teams pretty much are.
Yeah.
Each one would replace something.
I know, my whole team is done with them and they're gonna go for the, well, they're not wearing them right now.
There's only two of us in my department wearing them.
First two.
Yeah, okay, so you, you're all the asked.
And I'm, and on the work side, I mean, like, the bibs and, I mean, like, Aaron said, we're bringing all our stuff in, destroying it, so.
I think we have to figure out what's a reasonable price, a reasonable replacement period and. And that's it.
The, the upfront cost is definitely, um.
You know, and the better, the more you can standardize the dates of this stuff, the better, the easier it be to manage it.
Right.
Well, but, you said these funds are healthy, so I mean, it's not that big of a deal, right?
And each, each supervisor, which I think Aaron may have started creating an Excel. Uh, but each supervisor is gonna have an Excel sheet with the, the dates purchases and that's gonna be on their scope to.
And then, yeah, well, you can put, set a flag for, if you do it right, you set a flag for data when it turns, you know. Turns available for change out or whatever. It sounds like they need to put some together on here.
People are needing it if we're.
I agree with you. Eric, I mean, your other thoughts? I know I can count on you, but I asked for a little thing here, but. So, any questions?
I don't know, I mean, especially if it's something required for your job.
Well, you have some, I mean, I think it's that and then, then we're getting back to safety money, that's going towards.
I'd say technically, we are paying for the stuff, a hundred and fifty dollars a year goes into this and then they, they save it and then they buy those items with their safety money. So no matter what, the city has been paying for it.
That was how much they think enough.
Well, I don't know.
Buying all of it, I mean, people not having insulated equipment that they need when they're gonna be out, outdoors in the weather.
Well, it's like, so, right now, my two employees, they won't even get the safety money this April. Cause you have to be here for a full year before you can, so they'll be here a year and a half before they can get a hundred and fifty dollars.
That was like Carson, he was hired in May.
Yeah, but that.
That was like Carson, he was hired in May, being in May, two years, like, this, this can be maybe two years.
Correct, so they, they would have to.
No, no, as soon as, as soon as you are.
We, we gotta kill that.
And then you would owe money back if you left them.
Yeah.
Yeah, that way they're, you don't have that gap.
Yeah, you, you're not here for.
The first day you're hired, you, you have the ability to outfit, outfit your employee.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then if you leave.
They owe you.
Your last.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's an expense upfront, it's an expense we can.
Sure.
Well, it's time, right?
Hmm.
Is it an expense upfront, we'll be able to, is there coming out of the different, three individual funds?
So, for the water department, I know, um. Aaron had totaled it up what it would cost to do, get everyone outfitted with what they're supposed to be.
Cause we already have, most of my guys are.
Twenty-four, twenty-five dollars for this, yeah, right?
Yeah, and that's to outfit to where they need to be, twenty-four hundred dollars, um.
And you have.
And then in September, to do the bibs, the vests, the face coverings for all five guys, it'd be twelve hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So, he's got it broken up a bit, and then I could ask, um, Matt and Phil to do the same also.
Does it, so their budgets pay us twenty-five hundred dollars?
Well, Phil's can't.
But we always have to take care of.
Yeah, Phil's got the general fund.
We're gonna, we'll help you.
Go fifty-fifty for them, guys, will you?
Come on, guys.
All your twelve hundred, if you'll do your thing.
You know, it's hard to be concrete.
I won't talk to you later.
Kick your pants.
We'll, we'll pay you in a safety equipment.
Yeah. You fix that, you put the concrete for us and we'll take it.
So, we'd have to do some work and figuring out on, uh.
I got my sheets just at the shop, I'll make it here.
That does, yeah, okay, so, is this something that we wanna try and put together for next week's meeting, or we're gonna put off in March?
This, this would be for budget, so I would get all of this together, and then our next budget work session, have all this laid out and.
Yeah, Todd.
Yeah.
No problem.
We still need to cut half a million bucks or, or more.
At least, um, so, I was looking back through and, um, we really need to somehow have to have a reserve.
Yeah.
It's gonna be very hard this year, um, so, it's just, I'd like for you guys to take everything that we've kind of went over tonight and think about it, and if you have any questions, let me know and discuss it, and. I just need some direction from you guys on, um, what you think is, you know, priority and.
How many employees do we have as a city, total?
Including part-time?
No, full-time.
Full-time?
About parts.
Uh, forty, forty-five, forty-four, forty-five, something like that.
Captain's office.
Yeah. So. But, then they keep working on it and.
All right, well.
Just to get the health insurance, anything else on that? Uh, the health insurance, uh, no, I don't have anything to report on at this time.
Those justify, this may arise. Anything there?
Any motion, we adjourn.
Second.
First and second.
Say, you're adjourned, all the players, please stand here, thank you all for your time.
Thank you, everybody, I know it's late. Okay, good night, guys.
See ya.
Be bright and early.
Oh, we're gonna come in late.
Yeah.
Good morning, sir.
Yep.
That's the third meeting. I wish I had said, no, we don't have that.
We don't want, we don't want to forget that number right there.
You can still do that, like that.
She said that number right there.
We're all in bed now, though, so.
Don't you come in.
That's what that two dollar versus being a bonus.
Yeah.
Add in the budget, anyway.
Yeah.
Hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, that two dollar, which is ten percent probably added up for everybody, so, if anybody ever complains about anything, five percent over four years. And ten percent then, that's compounding, you're wasting years.